Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. City manager, Isaiah Hughley. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. John Anchor, District 9. At-large counsel, Travis Chambers. District 10, at-large counsel, Lindsey McLemore, clerk of counsel and city attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good morning. We'll call to order the April 8th city council meeting. We're glad to have you all with us today. We'll begin as we always do, and that is by asking God's presence within these walls as well. So I'd like to ask Pastor Jimmy Elder to come forward. Pastor, if you would, hit that button and I'll... There you go.
That it? Good. Good morning. Glad to see all of you. Would you bow with me as we pray? Lord, this is an important time in all of our lives. A time when we are celebrating things within faith, things within community, things that draw us together as a people. And I pray you'll bless this meeting. Bless each person here who gives time to serve you and serve the citizens and serve the community at large. I pray that you'll bless them with wisdom, with patience, with your grace, that kind of grace that brings peace and love and strength to every decision made and to every opportunity that we have. Thank you for allowing us to live in a community like this. May we be good stewards of it, may we treasure it, and may we use it well. In your precious name, we offer our prayer, a prayer of blessing on the day. Amen.
Amen. Jimmy, thank you, sir. It's always a pleasure to have you. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, just want to remind everybody, we're keenly aware of the storm that touched down briefly out in the Midland area this past Sunday. A lot of our neighbors had damage to their property, to their homes, and a lot of trees were down. And I know, I think there'll be some details later about some type of moratorium to try to help people in that area get some of those trees off their lots and off their property. And of course, sadly, we also had two people that lost their lives during that storm. Reminder of just how significantly important it is that we pay attention to the warnings and things that are put out by Chance and his folks at the emergency management services. I ask you to keep that family in your prayers, but also ask you to keep our first responders in your prayers, the people who work scenes like that, that are so difficult to deal with, and also the people that work out at the golf course, who certainly were impacted by that tragedy as well. And I see Chance just walked in, and I know there's a little bit of information that we need to probably share about the sirens, because there were some questions, I think, about the sirens continuing to sound later. Chance, if you would, give us just a brief update on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, council, mayor, city manager. Obviously, an honor to be here today. This week, we had a... Obviously, the tragedy is what's overshadowing most of what it was. I can tell you that we knew there was an outlook of severe weather. We had been planning for that. In fact, when we went under a tornado watch at 11 o'clock, 11:05, I actually went into the office, into the emergency operations center, was prepared, as we do every time we have a tornado watch. When the tornado warning was actually issued, honestly, that tornado warning happened very abruptly. They had not been tracking as a tornado warning until it got to that point. When that happened, our siren system did exactly like it was supposed to do. It automatically activated all of the sirens inside the polygon warning area the National Weather Service had issued. Those sirens did activate. We had confirmation from residents that they did activate. The tornado warning did cause damage. I have surveyed the entire area, and yesterday I toured the entire area track of what has been now confirmed to be a tornado with the National Weather Service warning meteorologist in charge. He came down, we got in my vehicle and rode the entire area for hours. It has now been confirmed an EF1 tornado at 90 mile an hour winds, and it was on the ground for 2.6 miles. We are very fortunate that it was not a stronger storm, because the areas that it went through, when it came down and started at Beaver Run, could have really done devastation to that area with those storms. So I think that, you know, I want to give a lot of credit to our first responders, our public works department. They're going to be busy for a long time. Those trees and the things we saw, they're going to be so busy. But I will address the other issue with the sirens. After the system was over, after we were still coming out of the watch, I was obviously doing all of our reports and documentation. I sent my assistant into the room, into the system that we've had for a couple of years now, but fortunately, we haven't had to use it very much. Since we've had that system in place for polygon warning, we've only had two tornado warnings. That's a really good thing. So we haven't had to do much work in that system. And when he went into that system to do the report for me for that earlier activation, somehow a key was pushed in the system that he was not familiar with, and that's why they went off inadvertently. We immediately rectify that situation, and we were going to learn to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Honestly, it's a nightmare of mine for those to go off when they're not supposed to. What I am very happy to report today, that when they were supposed to go off, they did go off correctly and the right way. And whether it helped people seek warning, I do want to emphasize, I can't say this enough, I say this every time I come up here and I'm with the media, is those sirens, we call those outdoor warning sirens, and they are made to warn people when you're outdoors, not when you're indoors. I have people call sometimes and say, "I didn't hear the sirens go off on Saturday at noon." And I ask them, "Where were you at?" "I was in my living room watching TV." That's not what it's meant to be. It's meant for outdoors, for you to come in. Indoors, we want you to have no weather radios, we want you to be watching the news, watching our great meteorologists local here, their local news stations there. They are a wealth of knowledge. When we're in our emergency operations center, we have them up on our screen. And also, we have a smartphone app that I hope everyone here has already, hope you know about it. I have laid a handful of pamphlets back here so that everybody here can grab one. I have a history trail through this entire storm, from the minute the watch was issued all the way through severe thunderstorm warnings, the tornado warning, and even a flood warning that has been issued through the National Weather Service that went through our app, our smartphone app with push notifications. So that is a critical way for you to get vital information when we have severe weather or any other major emergency in Columbus, Muskogee County. So again, I apologize that they went off inadvertently that afternoon. It was absolutely human error. It is not a reflection of the system. The system worked exactly like it was supposed to do. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, to express condolences to the family for their loss. Our prayers are with them, but you mentioned the moratorium, and I do have staff working to determine what area, and we'll work with Homeland Security on that. And then we will determine how long the moratorium will be. I had one call yesterday from a gentleman from Midland, had trees down, and I told him we are going to help. They'll have to get the tree and cut it up, at least in four-foot sections, and we'll provide instructions with the news release, and they're going to have to get it to the curb. We can't come on private property and get those trees or limbs, so they're going to have to get it to the curb. And if they get it to the curb, then Public Works will pick up the trees and tree limbs and dispose of it. Just don't... But they'll have specific instructions of length of the cut and where it should be placed, and then we will share with them how long we will be doing this. We know with what we know that it will be for several weeks, but we'll be very specific in the news release.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. First order of business is to approve the minutes from March 25th. Motion and a second to approve. Are there any edits or any questions or comments on the minutes? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. I've heard any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Got a couple of proclamations today and one we're kind of bittersweet about. It's Mary Sherman. Is Mary here? Well, we'll go ahead. Councilor Kogle, has that... Is she coming today? If she is, we can wait a little bit.
I guess not.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead. Councilor Kogle, we'll read that into the record.
As some of you may know, Mary has been played a very large part in the sports council, the Columbus Sports Council for some time now. So she has decided to take another position, and she is moving on. It is a big loss to Columbus, but we wanted to honor her today with Mary Sherman Day. So I'm just going to read this into the record. Whereas Mary Sherman began her career with the Columbus Sports Council, a 501(c)(3) organization that fosters economic development through the recruitment and facilitation of sporting events in 2004, and became the executive director in 2015. And whereas Mary, along with the dedication of the staff and loyal volunteers of the Columbus Sports Council, brings in over $26 million in visitor spending to the community throughout many events hosted throughout the year. And whereas Mary is a certified sports event executive and sports tourism strategist and designation through the Sports Event Tourism Association. And whereas Mary has received several awards, to include the NFCA Melinda Fisher Distinguished Service Award, was named the Rising Star by the Columbus Chamber of Commerce, and was recognized as the Georgia Trend 40 Under 40. Mary will be missed in Columbus, Georgia. The sporting community and her legacy will be evident for many years to come. Now, therefore, I, B. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, here to proclaim Tuesday, April 8, 2025, as Mary Sherman Day.
Thank you, Councilor. We'll forward the proclamation to Ms. Sherman, and I'm sure we'll probably make another big deal out of her at some point. It's... I think it's impossible to overstate what an impact she's had on the development of sports tourism here in our community. So thank you. All right. Next is proclamation celebrating Arts and Culture Month. Is Carrie Beth here? Yes. Please come forward. Anybody you want to bring with you? This is exciting. Councilor Chambers will present that proclamation.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank y'all for being here, and thanks for what you do. Of course, as you know, arts and culture is very critical to the economic development in our community, and we don't take it lightly. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas the arts in Columbus, Georgia are a vibrant and essential part of economic development and the quality of life for our citizens. And whereas cities rich in arts and culture assets are statistically healthier and more prosperous overall. And whereas Columbus, Georgia will celebrate Arts and Culture Month during the entire month of April. These celebrations will include Arts Fest, a month-long celebration of the city's rich creative talent and many arts organizations striving to captivate and inspire diverse audience of all ages every day. Art Fest will celebrate the important contribution the arts make to an increased quality of life in Columbus, Georgia, thanks to the many artists and creative industry professionals who live and work here every day. And whereas Art Fest will encompass more than 70 events from all over 20 presenting organizations throughout the month of April, including more than 100 local artists, and feature the first annual Art Fest block party on April 20th from 9:00 a.m. to noon on grounds of the River Center for the Performing Arts. And whereas the arts is our city, are an essential part of the educational curriculum in our schools, and beautify our community through acting as a source of joy and renewal of spirit. And whereas the city of Columbus, Georgia supports the collaborative efforts of the Columbus Cultural Arts Alliance, the Columbus Site, and the many artists and patrons in our community in their efforts to continue fostering an environment where the arts are celebrated and flourished in Columbus, Georgia. Now, therefore, I, B. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 20... April 2025 as Arts and Culture Month. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Chambers, Mayor, members of city council. We cannot express our gratitude to each of you enough. I hear your enthusiasm for the arts. I know it personally, and I'm very grateful. I know so many of you are avid arts patrons and supporters, and we're here again to ask you for more every day. In new projections from Columbus State University's Butler Center, we have just received word, and we know these are low projections, that the estimated economic impact of cultural industries in our region in Columbus produce $519 million every year. The nonprofit organizations that you see here, as well as many of our constituents, colleagues that couldn't be here today, they're responsible for the creation and development of 1,300 local jobs, and of this economic impact, at least $58 million a year is generated just in tax revenue from the city. These are increases from 2014, which was in the last major study was done. We're working on getting another major study to happen. And yes, Arts Fest is a month-long celebration for the arts. We are so grateful. Mayor Henderson, I have to stand here and say this was your idea. About 18 months ago now, we met, and Mayor Henderson wanted a free festival celebration of the arts that could bring the community together. I do need to make a small correction. This year is the second annual celebration, and it will be held on April 27th from noon to 5:00 at the Return of Arts in the Park at Lake Bottom Park. If you've been in Columbus long enough, you know what a phenomenal event that is, and we have some local Midtowners here that are working hard to bring that back. We want the community to come out and enjoy that day. There will be live music, food trucks, performances by local students, art exhibitions by students. I mean, I'm running out of things. I mean, there's so many things I'm leaving out. We have aerial artists. And most importantly, our barrier to accessibility is removed that day. If you can get to Lake Bottom Park, you can come and engage with these incredible organizations. You can hear about the work that they're doing. More importantly, you can shake the hand of a local artist, possibly purchase a piece of their work, buy season tickets to one of these organizations, and enjoy what I like to say is the absolute best Columbus, Georgia has to offer. You're right when you say that communities that invest in the arts are healthier overall, they're happier overall. There's new data at the state. Right now, there's a new legislation in place that proves that the arts improve our mental and emotional wellness. The arts are being prescribed as part of treatment for certain illnesses across the country. There's a phenomenal new bestseller called Your Brain on Art that talks about all of this in detail for medical professionals. So there's no doubt that Columbus, Georgia is a city of the arts. We are, and that's largely thanks to you all and your support, but mainly, I'm just a megaphone, right? This is the... These are the people, and these are the organizations that make it happen. So please join me in a round of applause for them, so that we can thank them. Thank you all again, and please join us April 27th at Arts in the Park. It's a Sunday afternoon from noon to 5:00 p.m., and come meet all of these fabulous people, and the people, they represent yourselves. Thank you again.
And I don't know if you introduce yourself. Carrie Beth wants...
Nope.
She wears a lot of hats. One of them is as the publisher and owner of the Columbus Site. She's a tireless promoter and advocate of the arts, and she's agreed to serve as sort of an unofficial liaison with the mayor's office, because I tell you, number one, arts is big business for any community. It is economic development. You heard the numbers. But beyond that, I think it helps to create a quality of life, and it says something about a community when they've got a vital and active arts community. So these folks that are standing over here, I'm telling you, for those of you that haven't gotten out of your own backyard in quite a while, look over here in this corner, there's so many things in Columbus to do, and I hear that all the time, there's nothing to do. Go on a museum tour right here in your own hometown and try to see the diversity of those museums and see how powerful the presentations are in those. We've got world-class performing centers, the River Center for the Arts, the Springer Theater. I don't want to start naming them because I'll leave somebody out, but I'm excited about what you're doing, the Arts in the Park, seeing that come back. We appreciate Midtown diving in and kind of driving that. But if we could, if y'all would come up, we'll take a minute and come up to the mic, just tell us who you are and what part of the arts you're representing right now. And then when you finish, everybody come around here and let us thank you again.
Mayor, would it be okay if we start with Danielle Varner from the Springer Opera House? She is the chair of our arts alliance.
That would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Danielle?
Thank you, Carrie Beth. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, city manager, city council. I want to reiterate what Carrie Beth said, and also I want to take the opportunity just to thank you all. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your dedication, but more importantly, thank you for your attendance of our organizations. We see you and we appreciate you so much. Mr. Mayor, thank you for this honor today. We appreciate it so much.
Oh, I guess I'll start. I'm Danielle Varner. I'm the CEO and executive producer of the Springer Opera House, and I'm also the chair of the Columbus Cultural Arts Alliance.
Hi, I'm Christina Gallagher. This is my sister and neighbor, Jessica Carden, and we are working to bring back Arts in the Park.
Hi, I'm Shelby Guest with Visit Columbus GA, and part of our job is to promote all of these events to locals and to regionals and to get the visitors to come to town.
Good morning. I'm Kern Watkins. I'm the executive director of the Columbus Symphony Orchestra.
Hi, I'm Katie Underwood. I'm the director of operations at the Springer Opera House.
Good morning. I'm Rachel Morway, executive director of the Youth Orchestra of Greater Columbus.
Hi, I'm Lauren Money. I'm the director of marketing at Columbus Botanical Garden.
Hi, I'm Ashley Watanabe, the CEO of Visit Columbus GA, and we have the honor every day to promote everything in Columbus, but especially the arts and culture. Thank you.
I'm Ellie Hughes, and I work with Clement Arts as the studio director, where I run all of our arts programming for children in our community.
Good morning. I'm Ally Kent. I'm the director of audience development from the Springer Opera House.
Good morning. My name is Keith McCoy, and I'm the artistic director at the Springer Opera House.
Good morning. My name is Sharika Day. I serve on the Visit Columbus GA board. I'm on the Springer board. I was on the CSO Riverside board, and I also write from time to time with the Columbus Site. So I'm a big arts advocate. I was one of the partners behind the art mural that's on Talboton Road. So I'm all for everything art, so keep on supporting us.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Kristin Hudson. I'm the director of marketing and public relations for the Columbus Museum. Thank you again.
Good morning. I'm Norm Easterbrook of the River Center, and as always, thank you for everything that you do to support the arts in our community. It means a great deal. Thank you.
Good morning. We're going to sing a little song. No, I'm just playing. It was amazing grace last time. But Arisha Z. Lawrence, better known as Zee, here representing the Columbus Jazz Society, the Music Entertainment Council, sit on the symphony board, liberty board, sit on a lot of boards. We're not bored at all, but we just sit on these boards. Please support music, support the arts and everything that's going on in Columbus, Georgia. We need you. We need your dollars. We need your investments, but more importantly, we just need you to be present. So just show up. So it's a free event. Please, you heard everything that Carrie Beth said, so please, council members, support the arts, support music. More importantly, in Georgia, support the creative economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Zee. Thank all of you for what you do. If you would, come around here and let us thank you guys. Let y'all come around, we can thank you, and we can also hand you the proclamation. I want to thank all those folks for taking time out of their morning, and thank y'all for indulging us and letting us recognize them. It really, the arts in Columbus, to a lot of folks, they don't understand just all that is offered, so we would encourage you to seek out some of those venues and check them out. Lot to do in this amazing community. All right, next, we're going to have a proclamation for National Community Development Week. Councilor Tucker. Rob is here. Anybody else you want to bring up with you, sir?
Good morning. Y'all stand close to the Rob so we can... The community can see you and spotlight. This is your moment. It's always a pleasure to present a proclamation on behalf of the mayor for the Community Reinvestment Department. They do some amazing work. You have amazing staff, and not only staff, volunteers, meaning Denise Cambridge of your board. You know, I got to throw your name out there. But today, it's about you all and what you do for the community, and the proclamation reads. Whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development established the Community Development Block Grant Program in 1974 to provide local governments with the financial resources necessary to address the needs of low-to-moderate-income individuals and neighborhoods. And whereas the city of Columbus has successfully... And whereas, the City of Columbus has successfully partnered with nonprofit organizations, neighborhood-based groups, and community stakeholders to respond to local challenges and improve the quality of life for all residents. And whereas, the CDBG program has made a significant and lasting impact on the Columbus community through investments in homeowner-occupied rehabilitation, new home construction, parks and recreational facilities, and critical infrastructure improvements. And whereas, the Home Program has made a significant and lasting impact on the Columbus community through investments in the availability and accessibility aspects of affordable housing development. And whereas, the Community Reinvestment Department of the City of Columbus has demonstrated high-impact, high-outcome performance in administering CDBG-funded initiatives, leveraging resources, maximizing community benefit, and delivering transformative programs that align with the city's strategic goals. And whereas, the city has utilized the HUD entitlement funding as a powerful tool to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing challenges in underserved areas through inclusive, community-centered approaches. Now, therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 21st through 25th, 2025, as National Community Development Week.
Rob?
First and foremost, just want to say, good morning, and thank you all for recognizing this moment.
Rob, if you'd hit that light, for some reason, I hit the wrong button, I guess. You got it? There it goes.
There we go. All right, good morning. Thank you all for recognizing this moment, and we invite you to join us as we kick off National Community Development Week 2025. National Community Development Week was established in 1986 with a clear mission. It was to raise awareness and build supports for federal programs like CDBG and Home, especially during our congressional appropriation process. Special thank you to you, Mr. Mayor, to you, Mr. City Manager, for your continued advocacy and your public expressions to our congressional delegate. At the heart of this celebration is the CDBG program. Since its creation in 1974, CDBG has played an integral role for more than 50 years in supporting communities across the country, especially those that HUD considers low-to-moderate income. This flexible funding allows local governments like ours to address pressing needs from affordable housing and infrastructure improvements to economic development and public services. Throughout the week, cities and counties across the country will spotlight the real local impact of these dollars and how they change lives, uplift neighborhoods, and empower residents. So, locally, we'll kick off the week on April 21st by recognizing the incredible CCG employees and community partners whose hard work has pushed CDBG projects forward. On April 22nd, through our partnership with Brewer Innovation Academy, the department, along with our Community Development Advisory Council members, will visit Ms. Selden's First Grace class, affectionately called Selden Sweeties, for a moment of reading and community engagement. On April 23rd, the department and the CDAC has partnered with Literacy Alliance to install a book nook lending library in the park next to the 29th Street Gym. And the goal here is to help expand access to free books and literacy resources. Also, on April 23rd, we're focusing on homeownership. The department has partnered with Human Resources for a Sweet Home Columbus Lunch and Learn event, in partnership also with the Urban League and local lenders, to provide valuable insights and resources to help make homeownership a reality. Lastly, on April 24th, the community will have the opportunity to see CDBG in action around Columbus. Through our partnership with Metra, we will be conducting the CDBG Bus Tour, which is a guided experience of the facilities, infrastructures, and neighborhoods that have been directly impacted by CDBG funding. Participants will have a chance to see the investment firsthand and to possibly even hear from the people whose lives have been touched by these programs. This kind of visibility is powerful, and it's what helps connect policy to the people it's meant to serve. So, throughout the week and beyond, we invite everyone to stay connected with the work being done through our department. You can follow our stories, show up to our events, and help us amplify the message that strong communities are built through partnerships, purposes, and smart investments like CDBG. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rob. Mr. City Manager?
Well, Mayor, I just want to thank Rob Scott and his team for the awesome work they do. And you heard in the resolution, or proclamation as it was read, and then through his brief walkthrough, what's going to be going on during the week. And I just want to commend them for their great work. They touch parts and rec, I mean, housing, they're all over the community. And so, with that said, Mayor, there is an item on my agenda, it's number two, if you so desire, so that he won't have to hang around.
Motion second to approve, Adam Two. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any votes?
Yeah, but awesome work, and Counselor Tucker, do you kind of read some of that in the proclamation or resolution? So, thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Counselor Tucker?
Yes. You always do a great job, you and your team. In reference to the Bus Tour, do you have the time listed? Because I think several counselors had wanted to do the Bus Tour.
We have, we are in the process of finalizing the tour as well as the times. But what we will be careful to do is to reach out to the Clerk of Council to make sure that she will notify each and every one of you so you have an opportunity to join us.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Rob, you want to take a minute and let you folks introduce themselves and what they do? These are the folks that make the magic happen.
Hi, I'm Kim Mitchell. I'm the Assistant Director.
Good morning, I'm Emma Kimbrel, and I'm the Planner.
Good morning, my name is Kavona Hooks. I'm the CDBG Program Coordinator.
Hello, I'm Mary Garcia. I'm the ARP Specialist.
Counselor, you need your light on?
Good morning, I'm Asia Marion, and I'm the Real Estate Specialist.
Good morning, I'm Casey Baker. I'm the Finance Manager.
Good morning, I'm Denise Cambridge, and I am the Community Development Advisory Council Board Chair.
Good morning, I'm James Jordan. I'm a CDAC Board Member.
We certainly appreciate y'all. If you would come around, let us thank your hand, shake your hands and thank you again, and pass out the resolution, the proclamation. All right. Next on the agenda, we have an update on our Columbus Klingstones. We have Pete Lavine here, who's the General Manager. Pete, you want to come to the podium and?
We don't have this.
Huh? No, it's being ordered. It shouldn't have been listed, it's service. There is another proclamation on the agenda, but it was put on there in error. It will be presented next month.
Thank you, Mayor. It's quite an honor to be here today. Standing here, I hearken back to, I guess it was maybe 14 months ago, I was sitting in my office in Mississippi watching the simulcast of a city council meeting when they were voting on the new stadium, wondering how it was going to affect my career and my life. And standing here 14 months later, it's, I have to say, being a part of this has changed my life and my career for the better. It's an honor to be here in Columbus with you all, one week from the opening of Sanovis Park. Can't tell you how excited we are as a staff, as a group with Diamond Baseball Holdings for what's upon us. I know many of you have probably been able to drive by and see the stadium construction, the renovations, or seen on TV, or maybe come on in person. And it's something to behold, really, just the convergence, the melding of the 100-year-old stadium that was Golden Park into what it is going to be for what we feel the next 100 years, Sanovis Park. It's, we're proud to be able to hold on to the history that's already there. You're going to see some great tributes to Golden Park throughout the stadium, where you still have those three arches that were put in for the 1996 Olympics. That is going to be converted into a legacy gateway, we're going to call it, where you can see old photos of the stadium from the last 100 years, photos of the Olympics, and plaques commemorating some of the famous players and people of the Golden Park era. But we're tremendously excited to show you the new amenities that we're going to feature there, from the Kid Zone in the atrium area behind Home Plate, the brand-new grab-and-go concession areas, the large picnic areas, the Aflac Stadium Club on the upper level, and the brand-new suites and seats. The seats are all new, all different types depending on where you sit. But what I really love is, it's with all these great improvements, it's not a big, large, vast arena now. It's the same compact, intimate venue many of you have grown to love over the years, and the same sightlines. You're very close to the action, even closer to the action now. We moved Home Plate back about 10 feet, so, and moved the outfield walls in too, so it's not going to be impossible to hit a homerun, which we envision the Klingstones hitting a lot of. Saw some of you in Montgomery on Friday for the first official Columbus Klingstones ballgame. They unfortunately lost the hard-fought game Friday, Saturday, got rained out Sunday. So, it's on to Biloxi now. They're in Biloxi, Mississippi, to take on the Biloxi Shuckers tonight through Sunday to get that first-ever win, and then be back here on Tuesday, April 15th, for the historic home opener at Sanovis Park. The ballgame's at 7:05 that night versus the Pensacola Blue Wahoos. We are going to open the gates earlier than normal. We're going to open the gates at 5:30. Normally, the gates will open at 6:00 PM for a 7:05 game. And I would suggest coming early. I think a lot of people are going to be in attendance that night. It will be a sold-out event. If you've been looking for tickets online, it may show no seats available. We are going to release some general admission tickets in the next day or two, several hundred. So, if you know anybody that's been looking or been asking, that will be the case, and we'll put that on our social media pages as well. We're trying to be very careful not to have too many people in attendance that night as we haven't held a game there yet, so we want to make sure we have the right amount. So, it's a positive experience for people, not gridlock once you enter the gates. So, we have a lot of great social spaces, a lot of great walking areas in the stadium. I think it'll be easy to traverse the ballpark, and I encourage you to do so, whether you're there opening day or whenever your first visit is, to just to check out all the new improvements that we owe to the City of Columbus for implementing as we start this journey, which our goal is, you know, to be a vehicle for economic development in the City of Columbus. We have, we've had our orientations the last couple of weeks, over 150 new employees that'll be working in various departments at the stadium, all very excited. And, you know, this venue is, you know, we have 69 home games, which, you know, is more than most professional teams would play in a season, but we're excited about that, but it's not limited to that. It's going to be a year-round venue. We're going to utilize the 10 and 1/2 months of great weather here in Columbus and utilize that Stadium Club, the Aflac Club, for events ranging from corporate outings, wedding receptions, Christmas parties year-round, the stadium we're going to utilize for nonprofit events, 5Ks, concerts, hopefully some big-time college baseball. We're hosting the GIAA High School State Baseball Finals in late May. We're looking forward to that, and, you know, working with other high school baseball classifications in the future years, whenever our schedule allows. So, we want Sanovis Park to be a gathering place for the community. Obviously, Klingstones baseball is a big part of it, but our venue, we look forward to being utilized year-round for all kinds of events, and, you know, feel free to, any affiliations you have with any groups, nonprofits, companies looking for a place to hold an event, we want you to reach out to us. We want to, like I said, be a vehicle for the entire City of Columbus, a gathering place for years to come. So, we can't wait to host everybody, whether it's, you just want to come by and take a walk around the stadium. We're in there now, and gates are open if you want to take a peek in. Just confirm the Orchard Team Store will be open at 10:00 AM today. If you want to see some of the new merchandise, the new gear, if you need something for opening day, come by and see us. But more than anything, if you just want to come by, take a look, see the progress. There's constantly something happening, signs going up, tables being built. I've been promised we have great weather for the next week, so that's really going to help things after the last couple of days. So, exciting times for the Klingstones, but, you know, overall, just can't thank the city enough for their support. The Atlanta Braves and Diamond Baseball Holdings, we definitely have the right group together, and I feel we're very much set up for success. So, appreciate you having me to here today. I'm happy to answer any questions, but more than anything, I'm just glad to be here today.
Well, Pete, we're delighted to have you and your family and the Klingstones here in Columbus, Georgia. You know, the Sanovis Park looks amazing. I think some of the councilors are going to have an opportunity to walk through there this week. And it's, you know, I'm glad you mentioned the Orchard because people want to get their Klingstone gear before they show up for opening day. And of course, for me selfishly, I can't mention the baseball without getting a little fired up about the second step in this overall plan, and that is to create a revenue stream and a redevelopment of South Columbus. Baseball's sort of the springboard to help that happen, and but to have a competitive team that is an Atlanta Braves team that is going to be playing in our community is just, is incredible. I've had so many people just stop me on the street telling me how excited they are about this home opener. So, I think you're right, I would anticipate a sellout. And I know there's some things planned with the help of Fort Benning and some other special things for the first game. So, we would urge people to get there early and see the festivities.
Absolutely, I'm glad you mentioned that. We're going to start the festivities on the field probably around 6:00 PM that night, have some great speakers. We're going to have a Black Hawk helicopter fly over right after the National Anthem. And, you know, we really want to recognize the 250th anniversary of the U.S. Army throughout the year, and our close ties to Fort Benning, of course, so there's going to be a very strong military theme. military theme, starting with opening day, with the military band playing out front, brass band as people come in, you'll enjoy their music. We're gonna have a National Anthem singer from Fort Benning, as well as their honor guard. Brigadier General Chalfant will be there throwing out one of the first pitches, and we'll have also great representation from the Atlanta Braves, Major League Baseball, Fort Benning, Sanovis, and maybe another special guest throwing out the ceremonial first pitch. So we'll save a few surprises for you that night. But, yeah, again, just come early, check things out, take some great photos if you're there that night, and really soak it in. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to that night, step aside and just try to soak it in myself, because even being involved in the project meetings, the construction, it'll be surreal for me as well, just like many of the fans that first night, when the buzz of the crowd is going, the music's going, the smokehouse in the left-field party areas wafting through the stadium, there'll be nothing like it. So I can't wait for y'all to experience it as well.
Thank you, Pete. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, congratulations, and we're excited. Director Ryan Pruitt has some, a PowerPoint, he wants to show kind of what's going on at the baseball stadium. And then Deputy City Manager will mention the shuttle, because we do expect a heavy crowd on opening day. So when Pete is done, I'd like for Ryan to kind of show off a few photos of what's going on down here.
Pete, again, we're delighted you and your family are here, and we're looking forward to a good season and many seasons to come.
Thank you, Mayor. Go Klingstones!
Go Klingstones!
Good morning, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager. I do have a brief presentation, just wanted to take this opportunity, after Pete gave his update, just to show the progress at Sanovis Park. Many people have driven by, but we have some updated drone shots of what it looks like. So I did wanna thank our construction partner, Brassfield &amp; Gory. This was a design-build contract, so Brassfield &amp; Gory was over the design and the construction of the facility. Their lead designer was Populus. They also had local partners, Heck-Birdishaw, Moon Meeks involved. Couldn't have done this and delivered this project without them. You know, the keys to any construction project, of course, is your scope, your schedule, and your budget. You know, the scope was to deliver a facility that complied with all MLB standards and would really be top of the line. I feel like we have done that. The schedule, of course, was very tight, starting last April to be done by opening day. This year, we completed that, all the inspections have been completed, certificate of occupancies have been issued for this facility, so it's ready to go play baseball. And then the budget was established at $50 million, and we came in underneath that budget for this facility. So again, just some photos taken last Friday, I do believe, so you can see all the construction that was completed, the clubhouse and batting cages out front, the main entry walkway as you proceed into the stadium, and then, of course, the field. Here's a shot from the back of the stadium, so that behind home plate, that fenced-off area, that'll be the kids' zone. DVH will have some activities and things set up there. Here's a shot of the Coca-Cola sign as you make your way into the facility. Another shot of the main entry gate as you come in, that's where the team store is located right there to the right. Shot from inside of the stadium, again, the original concrete, or the concrete from 1951, as well as the steel canopy, that all is the original materials. That is, we call it the patron building, that's the club building there on the left. You can see the arches that Pete mentioned that will remain in place. And then I have a time-lapse video taken from centerfield that Brassfield &amp; Gory had installed to kind of monitor the project. So this started, was installed almost a year ago exactly, I believe April 9th is what this picture is last year, and we stand here today, April 8th. I think, yeah, we can play. So of course, you had all the demolition, everything was completed, and then coming back with the new construction, you see the building going up there on the left, and they So again, just wanted to use this opportunity to show the picture, show what it looked like, show the time lapse of the project and how we completed it. So be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Doesn't seem to be any.
And so, Mayor, let me have Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin to just talk about the Metro Shuttle. We won't do this, obviously, for every game, but for this first game, we do anticipate a huge turnout.
Absolutely. Good morning. Yes, if you want to kind of stay away from this opening day traffic, Metro Transit will provide a free shuttle, and that shuttle will be from the River Center parking deck, 919 Broadway, beginning at 5:00 PM. So again, you can come get this shuttle, it's going to transport you to the back gate of the Sanovis Park entry area, and then, of course, that's where the pickup area will be to get you back. From the River Center to the back gate is about four minutes, so you can get there quickly without hesitation. So again, on opening day, and we'll probably do this opening day, of course, and then their next biggest game will be the 4th of July. And so those are the two big games, just to kind of, you know, keep the traffic flow moving and you're not getting stuck in it. So again, beginning at 5:00 PM, free of charge, 919 Broadway, at the River Center parking deck, which of course is always free anyway.
Great. Thank you, ma'am.
And Mayor, aside from that, I can bring the add-on that you sent the email out about yesterday on my agenda, or I don't know if you wanna take that up now, but...
I think that's a pleasure, Council.
And this would be the RFP on having the Development Authority to issue RFP for redevelopment of South Commons.
Yeah, and this is, this is something very simple, I think, because there's no, there's no obligation, it's not, it's not a binding RFP. All we're doing is trying to get an idea of who would be interested and what they think that would look like. Of course, they would be responsible for doing any site work that's necessary to get that all done. But yeah, it's, this is... Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. I did have one question, is there gonna be multiple shuttles going back and forth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Before we move forward with this RFP, there's, I think we need some more discussion. One thing I would like to do, and maybe, maybe we don't, we can't do this out of protocol, we need a first motion and a second before we have discussion on this.
Oh, yeah, you can discuss, you're welcome to discuss it.
Because I'd like, before we go any further on the redevelopment of South Commons, I'd like to make a motion to add a referendum to be put on the May 2026 ballot for the citizens to be able to vote to approve further development to include retail, restaurants, housing, motel, and parking in the South Commons area.
One second. Well, you do know that even if that is put off, this does not bind anything, this doesn't, even if it, this just to get an idea of what could go there and what the developers think would fit. You can, if you, I don't think there's any reason for the referendum, but if for whatever reason the council decides they wanna utilize one, that could still be done in, as part and parcel of what we're doing with getting the overall, the overall look of it done, find out what would, what would fit.
We've also discussed the TAD in that area, and I think before we do any kind of, you know, RFP on it, we need to kind of know if there's going to be a TAD there or not.
Well, and once again...
And discuss that, because they'll, they'll give us a plan based on maybe using TAD dollars, and if we, this body votes out a TAD, then it's gonna mess up their numbers.
This is not for them to try to come up with a hard, fast number, this is to get a vision of what could go in there, so that the council can then come back, take a look, and they'll negotiate with the individual organization that says this is what we see this being, and they'll approve the way that looks, and then any other ancillary issues that go along with it to include the TAD, which, and again, the TAD frankly is a resource that was put together for exactly a situation like this. Now, some of the others, when they go in areas and we don't see any development, that's a little bit different, but this, I mean, I don't think this is gonna be a difficult decision for council, just because of the resource that the TAD represents to get this completed.
Then I'd like, I'd like it explained a little bit better, because for a year now, you've been, we've been seeing pictures of what a development would look like in there. And also, you've been saying that the redevelopment of this area is crucial for the funding of the baseball. So I would really like to get a better idea of how that all falls together, because it, the way I understand TADS, we're not going to get any extra money from the redevelopment, because it all will go into a TAD.
Well, just, just to correct one thing, I haven't said that this is gonna be essential for funding the baseball. This has nothing to do with the baseball. The TAD would be to develop some of the infrastructure and the common work that, that any developer would need to try to get that going, much like we've seen done in Uptown, when they built the garage in order to be able to expand and put Riverfront Place together. All that did was just use the TAD money to pay off some of the debt services, they've moved forward out of that. And, you know, to say that we're not getting any tax dollars, it's an area right now that has no tax dollars. So any, if a dollar comes in, it's 100% more than what we were getting prior to that, but it should be much more than that, obviously. And you've got the hotel motel tax, you've got sales tax, you've got all of the other taxes that broaden our revenue stream. This was, to me, if we, if you don't move forward with the development, then I think we've thrown away $50 million, because the only way that baseball made sense was if this was also an additional part of that. So, and that's a broader discussion. This is simply to get it put in context, simply to try to look and see what they wanna, what could conceivably go in there. And when we show pictures, all we're trying to do is make sure that people understand that this is a real opportunity for South Columbus to get re-energized, and by doing so, it broadens and deepens our revenue stream for decades to come. It isn't about so much the first year, it's about the revenue that is gonna be generated as long as that place exists. And I think you're right, I think at some point you do sunset the TAD, and you let that money go into the general fund, and then it can be utilized for anything council decides to budget it for. But to get it started, the TAD being an opportunity to not go into any of our resources and allow the momentum of the development itself to generate the resources to build it, to me, it's exactly what a TAD was for. There's some other that have been questionable, but that, to me, is exactly what the TAD is designed for. Councilor Chambers?
So, just for clarification, the RFP is response, I mean, request for proposal. We're not making any commitments, correct?
No, none at all.
So it's just for informational purposes?
Well, it's to try to get a little bit firmer idea of what a design would look like, for council to take a look at what they see, and then make any changes or make any approvals that they wanna, wanna do, but it's non-binding. If none of them come back in, in a manner in which council was hoping to see this take place, then go back to the drawing board.
But we can always add input, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilor Anker?
I agree that the citizens would like to see development in that economy to help our good investment in the South Commons area, so I would like to see that. I do, I'm trying to catch up, Mr. Mayor, and trying to understand, I think a lot of people are asking questions on how, what, when, why, and that's why I would like to take some time. And I know sometimes it's hard to take time when we've got so much in, but we don't wanna get over our skis too much. And so I'm asking, why are we doing this so fast? I think I was really happy to hear Pete, and the scope of the project was complete. The schedule of the project is on time. I haven't heard yet how the budget has gone and how the contractors have assumed the role of finance, and these might be my issues, not your issues and city manager's issues, but I think they're general questions for our citizens. And I am concerned with the general language of sunsetting a TAD. So I am in favor of development, and good developers coming in and doing what we said we wanna do, but I, we're in the budget season, we're about to go that direction. I know it's gonna cost money to get site work and do these things, so I wanna slow it down personally. And I have more questions about that, that line of questioning than I think you might wanna go into right now.
Yeah, and, you know, and I think you're right, I think it's an opportunity to get together offline and kind of get you caught up, because we don't pay for the site work. Site work is done by the Development Authority, that's why we give them the opportunity to take this property and go out there and advertise it for an RFP. The RFP is not for obligating any funds. The RFP is designed to allow us to get a little bit better idea and vision of what that's gonna look like, and alter it. I mean, even if we come up with something that looks really close to what we want, this council says, no, we'd really like to see it go this direction, that's what that's for. So there's no, this RFP is not to expend any funds, this RFP is to try to gather the information necessary to decide how to go about capitalizing some of those things. And, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you mentioned the, how it came in on budget, and I think that's what, one of the bright spots of the, of the project as it's completed is that it did come in under budget, so that money has to go back into something in the South Commons. So I think initially, we talked about the possibility of applying some of those funds to AJ McClung Stadium, which...
I'd like to make, you know, the TAD's a big thing, I think, to discuss. I think citizens have, have helped build this ballpark, all citizens in Columbus, we're behind Pete, we're behind the Klingstones, we've done this, we wanna have success with it. We have dedicated to South Commons to do a development, and we wanna see this through, but personally, I'd like to take some time and get some of these lists of things. I'm not ready to move that fast. That's just me, sir. Thank you.
Right, Councilor Garrett?
I think I have a motion which will address the concerns of several councilors I'll make after I talk about this, but I do wanna remind everyone that we probably have people that were in our seat that were thinking the same things we're thinking back when the interstate was looking at coming through here. Slow the process down. What's, how's it gonna affect our city? We didn't move fast enough on that. We have lost out on years of economic opportunity. And I do not say this to, to say you have to vote the way that your predecessors voted, but I do wanna remind our appointed councilors, Councilor Barnes, Councilor Thomas, were integral to us passing baseball. It was a very close vote. They believed that it wasn't just the dream of baseball, it was the dream of economic development. And, you know, I'm gonna make a motion that will, I think, will help this process. My motion will be to amend the RFP so that it does not include any reference to TAD funding or tax abatements. That's the first part of it, because that protects people who are worried that we're gonna be giving away tax abatements or guaranteeing that this TAD will be around forever, because we do have the power to remove the TAD. And the second part would be that the RFP include appropriate site work to be completed by the Development Authority to facilitate that RFP. We, you know, we're not in the business of development up here, a lot of us have talked about that, but we do have made appointments to the Development Authority of people we feel like have knowledge of business, and I do trust them with the process. And I think if we give them that direction, the site work's gonna slow this process down, not being able to... Not being able to promise any tax abatements or TAD funding takes away the concern that somebody's going to come here and there and we're going to be locked in for funding. But we voted on this over a year ago. I get caution. I do understand it. I, I respect the councilors who want caution. But we thought about this for over a year. Counselor Barnes and Counselor Thomas, when they talked to me and we talked, because not everybody was on board with baseball at first. We had conversations. We did talk through these things. And one thing we knew was that if we passed it, we had to pass the economic development piece because that's the only way we can get the investment back and protect our citizens from tax increases. So I am making that motion to amend the RFP so that it does not include any reference to TAD funding or tax abatements and that the RFP include appropriate site work to be completed by the Development Authority to facilitate the RFP.
All right. Got you. So we have two motions now. We'll address the first motion first, which was to. Okay, well, that is a substitute motion. So we'll vote on the amendment first. Any questions or any comments as to the, the motion from Counselor Walker? Counselor Kogle?
Last week, I think when we had some brief discussion on the fact that we had pulled the RFP off the, off the agenda, one of my concerns was that, that there hadn't been any site development done. And so I actually, I was a little bit surprised to see it back on, on the agenda today. But I think if we can, if, if we can have that amendment that Counselor Garrett had put into the, into this RFP, it will slow the process down, but it won't kick the can down the road long enough that we're going to inhibit any, any growth. Because it, baseball is here whether, whether you like it or not. And, and we, we need it to succeed in Columbus. It's a good thing for Columbus. I think we can all agree, I would say, most of us love the game of baseball. And this is one of the integral, integral parts of this, this whole project. And so in order for this to be the dream that we all want it to see, we do have to have this development piece in, in place. And so if we, I think if we drag our feet on it, Counselor Garrett does bring, bring up a good point that, that it's, it's going to prolong the inevitable. And so, I, I mean, I'm happy with the, with the two amendments of not including the, whether or not yes or no on the TAD. And then as well as pending any site work to be done. As long as, as long as that site work, I think, is done, I think we're going to be putting ourselves in a, in a, in a good space as far as any projecting or any, any RFP, anybody who's going to be submitting an RFP down the road is, is, we're setting them up for, for success. I do also think that it is really going to be important for us to have an understanding of how much this is actually going to cost the, the taxpayer in reference to any preliminary work that the city has to do. And so coming into the budget, having some of that, that site work done ahead of time is going to give us a, a little bit better idea of how much we have to put into streets and sewage and, and sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm happy with that, that amendment.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mayor Procham is to the motion?
Yes, sir, thank you. Just to kind of piggyback on Counselor Walker and Counselor Kogle's comments, I just want to remind council, especially for the newer councilors, TADS were put in place by city council. TADS can be removed by city council at any time. That if, if we're going to look at the $50 million that we voted to build the stadium with, that was, in my opinion, that was designed to be paid for by the development around the, the ball stadium. If, if it, we had not had the development around the ball stadium, I would not have supported baseball coming here. So my fear is, is that we start talking about not doing the development around the stadium and then we're, we're still hung with $50 million price tag. And the only way to pay for that is through taxes. And that's what I'm trying to avoid. If we develop the property around the ball field, that pays for well above and beyond the cost of the $50 million. And it'll allow us to improve everything down in South Commons that needs to be upgraded and, and have a surplus in the budget each year to, to, to put towards other recreational costs in the city, to improve the parks, to improve a lot of other things, like Counselor Kogle said, our, our streets and drainage systems and, and many other things that the citizens rely on us for. So again, for the new guys, TADS, TADS were created by us and put in place by council. We can, we can take them apart, disassemble them at any time. So thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. We do have a developer on this council. He happens to not be here today, and that's Glenn Davis. That's what he does for a living. He's a developer. And I would like to be able to get some input from him. But also, we've known about, we've, you know, been skirting around this for a year now, but not once in that year have you brought us together. At first, you know, when I first got on council, about once a quarter or so, we would have these meetings where we would have like five in a group or three in a group. And you'd have multiple meetings, you know, explaining things to us so that we kind of, we, kind of like as Dan Parker taught us, you know, in real estate sales, take them out to that safe island, you know, so that they, they get the big picture and then they feel more comfortable about the decisions that they have to make through the process. You've never taken us out to the safe island. You haven't taken the citizens there. You haven't taken council there. And I mean, I know you're busy, but that is essential, that is an essential part of this whole plan, is to take us there, show us the, the vision in, in deep, in a little bit more detail so that we can get on board with you. It's not, I'm not, I know that I may be coming across like a Debbie Downer here, but this is a lot of money. And, and what, like what Walker is saying, it's a huge decision. It could change everything, just like the, the interstate could change everything. And it's like, we have a responsibility to do it right. And we, we need, I need to see the big picture, not these little tidbits here and there. Because since I've been sitting on council, that has gotten us into some trouble. And I don't want to do that anymore.
Well, and what I'll tell you is this is part of that process of trying to have these discussions. The discussions you talked about after hearing from our city attorney, we're skirting very close to sunshine laws. When we have smaller meetings, I'm not the attorney. And I'm sorry if that offends you, but I'm just telling you that it's not, it's, it's not something that we should be doing. It's, it's very close and can be open for discussions to whether or not that is in violation. And, and we have tried to explain as much of this as we could to try to share because it is a, it's like a painting. We're all kind of contributing to what this final painting looks like. And, and the money that you talk about, that's why we bring this forward because the money you talk about is spent. It's spent. The $50 million is spent. There's a beautiful Sanovas Park out there, and that's a little under $50 million. This was step two, to try to accomplish the overall objective, which, yes, it included baseball, but it really was focused on that redevelopment of South Columbus. And without, without the redevelopment, you don't create that revenue stream that can be utilized to not only offset the cost of what the stadium debt service is, but also use for other much-needed capital investment. We talk about parks and recreation. There's no real steady, dedicated stream of funds to try to address some of the ever-growing opportunities for us to reinvest in some of that, some of those types of programs. So that's what this is. And, and that's why we brought this first because we're not going to do the site work. Anytime we, the few times we've utilized the Development Authority to go out there and do an RFP and kind of test the water and see what it looks like, who's interested, who's not, how large a scope of the project we want to take a look at, they do the site work. Now, they do it with money that has been set aside through some millage that we have allocated for the Development Authority. But that's on them to get that done as much as they need. That's not additional funding that comes from, from this council. So that's the process, is to, to get the vision together, not, not my vision. My vision is holistic. And that is, baseball is a means to an end to try to increase our revenue as we move forward into the future for Columbus, Georgia. And to do it without putting any more on the backs of our residents. That's the vision. Now, how we get there, that's to be decided by this group, all of us together. So when they bring us some of these ideas, it gives us an opportunity to say, you know, I don't know if we want to be so heavily into the entertainment side, okay? Or I don't know if we want to put quite so many residential properties. That's what that is for. That's what we're doing right now is we're making a sausage. The very first step, though, is to get some idea of what we think it could look like from the Development Authority. We're not, we're not qualified, even Counselor Davis, if he was here, would tell you that. That's what the Development Authority does. Will White actually has somebody who he is in contact with who was a partner in developing the battery in Atlanta, which we kind of vision, envision this being a little smaller scaled type of, of battery. So Will has that, that expertise, he has that contact, and he's indicated that he's going to move forward and start having some conversations with them. So this is part of the process, but it's just another natural ordered step in making sure that we don't have a $50 million ballpark and nothing else.
So are you telling me that, that now the Development Authority has been, has been involved, brought into this? Because when this came, came to me, came to us two weeks ago.
That's inaccurate.
That, none of the development, I reached out and I talked to Will. I talked to Severin. I've talked to several people and they, they didn't know what I was talking about.
Well, I, I'm going to tell you that we have, without trying to embarrass anybody, we've had multiple conversations with the Chair of the Development Authority and gone through that route because we were still some steps away from getting to where we are now. So we kept the Development Authority involved. This has always been identified as being a project that the water would be carried by the Development Authority. That's the process. That's the way it works.
So why would they, why would several of them tell me that they don't know what I'm talking about?
I talked to Selvin because he is the Chair of that organization. And I, I can't answer that. Maybe you ought to call Selvin and ask him. But he and I have had multiple conversations. I know the city manager's been involved in a few of them. We've talked with, I know Josh in my office, who has been involved in trying to help, help put this together. We've spoken to them. They know what we want them to do. They, they're, they've been ready to go. They've been urging us to get off, off stop and start moving in that direction because they're, as the development arm of the city, they are excited. He, I don't know who all he's shared it to. I know we've recently briefed the entire Development Authority. Following protocol, we were working with the, with the Chair of that organization.
Well, this came to us so fast, I didn't have time to call them again. So, I mean.
Well, you need to vote the way you feel is appropriate. But I'm telling you that this is, this is, it's almost like a non-binding vote. It's almost, it, it's a situation where they will try to solicit input from organizations to see what it could look like. And, and frankly, when they come back with something, there's no guarantee that that's what the final product will look like. It's just like when we have shown some of these pictures with the green space. What we were trying to prove is what the, an ideological vision of, of what we think this can look like. And one of the things that is important to us is that we make it look like a park, that we put more green space. Right now, you go out there, if there's no event out there, you've got a sea of old cracked asphalt in front of that civic center. We can do better than that. And this was a means to try to get there. We've taken the step, we've jumped in. We just got to keep swimming so that we can get to where we want to be with the development of the, of the South Columbus piece. So. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, sir. I, I want to say first, thank you for sending that email at 3:43 yesterday apologizing that you forgot to add this to the agenda, which comes out on Wednesday prior to, and us not receiving the information till 5:00. I, I do feel very uncomfortable because we did not get to reach out to individuals on the Development Authority. I know Counselor Crabbe reached out and she basically got the word that people didn't know. And you're saying that you spoke with the Chair and that's what you do. You're supposed to speak to the Chair of the Board and the Chair of the Board is, if they have a meeting, relays that information to the rest of the Board members. However, this is, this is major. This is a major decision and I agree. I mean, we missed out on 85 coming through here. I don't know, I don't even know if I was living at that time when those decisions was being made. But if this was important, it would have been available on Wednesday for us to properly vet, research, and talk to the individuals that we needed to talk to. And also, we had concerns, and I'm thankful that Counselor Garrett did address the TAD allocation district portion in reference to financial considerations and the abatement and the site work. However, given council time to be able to contact those individuals who will be in charge of doing it, I think that would have been best for us to be able to have a clear conscience in making a yes vote. So this no vote does not mean no, you know, permanently. It just means no for now until I myself can speak to Will White or whoever regarding this to get, you know, a better understanding of, you know, where we're going, not just Wednesdays and Tuesdays, and us trying to make the decision 10 minutes prior to 9 o'clock. That's not right. And I, I know people out there in the audience are shaking their head, but you're making a major decision and you get this at 5:00, 5:00? Trying to see, 5:12 yesterday. And you can't talk to anybody because that's close to business. And that's not right for us to make decisions like that on, on a drop of, of a dime. It's, it's just, it's not. And, you know, I, I'm just saying. It's, it's a no for now until we.
First of all, this, this came out two weeks ago. We, we shared it with everybody, so they said, this is what we're bringing back. Second of all, it's not asking for money. It's not asking for an obligation of money. It's not even saying, we might give you money. This is, this is an RFP that is non-binding.
We didn't say when we was bringing it back. We didn't know.
But my point is, you act like you haven't read it.
If it was being brought back, sir, it would have been on the agenda on Wednesday. It was not on the agenda on Wednesday. It was haphazardly put on the agenda at 5:12 yesterday after the close of business. When people would not answer the phone or talk to you, that's not right. That's not right.
It is, it was on the agenda two weeks ago.
Yes, but we didn't, but we did not know.
So you ignored it two weeks ago and then wait until now? So anyway, this is, it's, it's up, up to you on how to vote. My confusion stems from the, the fact that this is non-binding. This is not asking for any money to be committed. It's not asking for any money to be spent.
It's not, it's not about that, that, sir. It's that if this is the most important thing, the life, you know, the livelihood of. the life, you know, the livelihood of, the lifeblood of the South Cummings, it would have been on the agenda on Wednesday. That way, we could have, you know, reached out to certain people and been able to talk.
Well, the level, the level of importance was explained back when we were talking about this at the very beginning, one year ago, or actually, almost two years ago. This was talked about then. This is the, this is the easiest piece to deal with, moving forward, trying to determine what we're going to do, doesn't address TADs. I, I can't tell the Development Authority, the Development Authority can't tell somebody else that they're going to have access to TAD. That's determined by this council. Council has to approve the project. This is not a vote that has any money attached to it. This is simply to get the ball rolling, so that we have an opportunity to look at what the possibilities are out there. I don't know how to state it any other way, it's, it's, we'll just, we'll just have to see how the vote, vote goes. Councilor Chambers?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, it's an, it's an RFP, response for a proposal, there's no commitments involved. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, we've talked over the years about South Columbus, we've talked about economic development, and I just don't want us to miss out on an opportunity to, number one, be able to, you know, create jobs over in that area, where people can have a good quality of life. And it's an opportunity to improve infrastructure, and most importantly, reduce crime in that area. So, I, I really want us to, you know, if we need to get the Development Authority or whoever, I mean, right now, we're just voting on a RFP. And I just, I want to put that out there, because I don't want us to, I want us to keep things in, in perspective.
Can I make a substitute to, um, motion?
We have, we have a substitute on the table already for the amendment.
I wanted to, I wanted to delay this until the next council meeting. I mean, I would hate, I would hate to vote no, but it would just give us time to, um, it, it would, it would give us time to actually just ask the questions, you know, have the conversations, and be able to come back and make a, a vote based on our conscience, but with the information that we need. So, that's all I'm asking, if we could just delay this to, to next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, second to delay, is a substitute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, it's delayed, that makes the other, we can still handle the other motion for the amendment.
We can just handle that, if we bring it back up.
We'll, we'll go ahead and call that motion. That's right. I mean, we can still amend, still amend the resolution, so that when it's brought back. So, there's, ma'am, are you lights on? I didn't, I can't hear you when you just blurted out. I don't see it.
Do you want to get to your motion, or would you like to withdraw?
We'll go ahead and vote on the amendment.
Yeah. All right, Councilor Anker, is it to the motion for the amendment?
No, I still have comments.
Oh, okay, all right. We'll go ahead and call, call that motion. This is to amend it, so I believe so that it makes no reference to tax credits or TADs, or, and, and of course, site development, and I think all of that is kind of normal for when we pass stuff on, but to have it, have it stated in there, I think is, is a good thing, so. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. Now, Councilor Anker? Whoa, hang on a minute. Here, sir. I'll ask a few of my questions about site work, cost, and scope, and timeframe later, and I, I want to make it known that I think everybody on this, a lot of citizens and the people on council understand the importance, Mr. Mayor, and what we're doing, what we want to happen, and I want developers to hear that, please, we want you, we want to have success, but we want to serve the citizens of Columbus. You can agree and disagree, and we want to hear from you, and that's the point she's making. And, you know, from, from a point of, of financing, we, we've got $50 million vested well in a scope, in a timeframe that came in, under budget, you just shared with me. We got our first game in one week. I want to understand more about, I appreciate Councilman Walker's putting those in, so I, I think the time is very relevant for us to get our feet under, have the first game, and move forward. I, I just want to state that I think it was important that we slowed down just one second. And if you consider that our operating cost of the baseball park and the $50 million might be three and a half, $4 million a year, we're talking about delaying maybe a month to start a site work, and I think all, all the money that we spend, it's well worth the extra one month of cost to make sure we get it right for the citizens. Thank you, sir. Yep, thanks, sir. All right, I think we're through with the mayor's agenda, finally. So, we'll move on to the, uh, City Attorney. Well, Councilor Crabbe?
Sorry, but we still have a motion on the table for the referendum.
Okay. That was for a referendum. I'm not sure the legality, I mean, can that be, can that be done, since it's already been?
Well, the only way it can be done is if you propose an ordinance, and you get a petition signed by 5% of the registered voters in Columbus, they would have to bring the petition back to council, and then council would finally take a vote on a proposed ordinance to accomplish whatever you're after. The only other way is get the legislature to pass a local act in the next session and provide a referendum on a particular issue, so, whichever route you go, it's going to take some time.
So, the first step, though, is to get started on that petition?
Yeah, I mean, 5% of the voters would have to request an, an ordinance to delete something from consideration, whatever it may be. Now, I will remind you, I think the Finance Director just sent us a, a note that the Liberty District 670 TAD Council has already committed $1.6 million of this TAD funding to go to A.J. McClung Stadium. There's currently $2.4 million in the, in that TAD fund, so, you, you certainly don't want to do away with the, that particular Liberty TAD if you've already committed $1.6 million to A.J. McClung, that's just-
Okay, and I, I think some money's already been committed to A.J. McClung. Okay, I thought it, all right, I thought you said Liberty. Councilor Tucker?
Yes, can we please get an update in reference to that $1.6 million that we did approve to A.J. McClung, and what project was decided on, and how long it's going to take for it to get done? That way, because if, I mean, worst-case scenario, maybe we need to shift that money and pull it from somewhere else, it might, it might happen, depending on the talks about removing this TAD.
Okay, well, if we get to that point, then we'll probably have to look for another source of that funds, if we're going to be able to continue to fund it.
Yeah, 'cause I'm, I'm trying to understand, if we use the $1.6 before we remove the TAD, is that, how does that work, City Attorney?
Well, you can't, you can't? Pam, you might want to comment, Ms. Hodge, but you've committed $1.6 million of that TAD funding to A.J. McClung. While there are financing projects going on in that TAD, you wouldn't want to dissolve it. You want to comment?
Well, I'm trying to...
There we go.
Ma'am?
So, there, there is an assessment being done for A.J. McClung. We contracted with 2WR to do an assessment. We should be coming back within the next 30 days with a presentation to provide the results of that assessment, and the priority in which projects would be recommended to be completed. There was an allocation of $1.6 million out of the TAD, and so, if those funds are expended, then council could consider dissolving that TAD. But at this point, they haven't been expended, because we want to make the presentation to council and let council decide on the priority listing based on the recommendations from the consultant.
So, we're making that presentation at the next council meeting?
I don't know if it will be the next council meeting, but definitely within the next 30 days.
Yeah, and it could be at the work session on the 29th of April, and, and I will say, you know, Deputy City Manager is, is accurate in that we are doing a full assessment of A.J. McClung Stadium, and, 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 and of course, you know, when you do a full assessment, you may not have funding to fund the entire assessment, and- Pardon?
Right, but you can set priorities.
So, um, so we'll, we're doing the full assessment, and, and that full assessment is likely, it, it will exceed $10 million, I'll just say that. It will exceed $10 million, and then, of course, if it exceeds whatever the amount is, 10 million, 12 million, 15, but it will exceed 10 million, then that $1.6 is, is a modest amount to, to go towards what needs to be done, and so, we'll see what's the highest priority we can get with the $1.6, and so, we will come back, maybe at the, maybe at the work session at the end of the month.
Okay.
Can we, can we kind of shoot for that, that date, and, and not-
We are shooting for that date.
Okay, 'cause when you say maybe, I was-
I'm saying maybe, because we're shooting for that date, and we're dealing with an architect, so, that's the date we're shooting for.
Okay, and, in reference to the $1.6, if we use the $1.6 on whatever, like, big-ticket item, once it's exhausted, it's exhausted, right? Or are we waiting to do the full $10 million and linking it up? Or how's, how's that working? How would that play?
Yeah, that, and that, of course, will be, I mean, you can tell us how high of a priority A.J. McClung is to you, when we bring you the full assessment. If it's 10 million, 12 million, 15, and, and we've got one, you, at the time, when the $1.6 was allocated, I believe that's all we had in that TAD.
Yeah.
And now, I believe it's grown to 2.4 million, but, but, but at that time, we'll say to you that, you know, it's a $10 million project, we've got $1.6, if you want to do, if all that we've got in the assessment, you know, if it's something that's urban, urgent to you and you want to do, then you may look for another funding source, whether it be bond, package, or some other funding source, so, we'll, we'll, once we bring it, we'll, we'll see what your appetite looks like, and, and we'll go from there.
Could we increase the $1.6 to maximize what's in the TAD?
Six votes, you can do anything you want to around the table.
Yeah, I'm just saying-
But, but, but let me just say this.
$2.2.
Let me say this. When you spend TAD dollars, there's a process, right?
There's, yes, there's a process.
And what is that process?
So, there is a TAD committee, there's TAD policies and procedures that were adopted by council that outlines what that process is, there's an application, a review process, and then it comes to council for consideration.
Then, I, I'm trying to see, then we have that conversation last time, and then we just approved it?
You did.
Because as the council body, we can approve the TAD?
You can, but who's on that committee?
So, there are three members from the city and two members from the school district, because you remember that 60% of the funding comes from the school district when they opt in to participate in any particular TAD district. So, we do have two members from the school district that participate on the TAD committee, reviewing the, the projects that are submitted.
So, these were policies approved by council that this is the process we'll use?
That's correct.
We just didn't, when it came up the last time, it was just a vote at the table, we didn't use that process.
That's correct.
And so, if you want to not use that process again, that you approved, you, you have the prerogative to do that, that's up to you.
Well, I think we just highlighted the sensibility in not trying to go so fast when we don't have the cost and the dollars in hand that we're going to use, so I think that principle would apply to this as well. It's at least wait until we get a full scope of what the repairs would like, and then this council can decide if they want to proceed with the TADs, how they want to proceed with the TADs, but yeah, I think, I think the patience is a virtue.
I think the main conversation, reference to the TAD, and the reason why we're having this conversation, and it is, you know, kind of moving, trying to get it, because we've been talking about, I can't even remember when we voted, I think it probably was a year ago, when we voted on this $1.6 million, so it's taken a year to even have this conversation again, but it's because even at that time, when we had that conversation, it had always been that we were considering to do away with the TAD, so that's the reason why we extended the $1.6. So, now we have 2.2, and to exhaust it, it would, it would go up to 2.2, and the conversation would be to dissolve that TAD.
Well, and once again, I think that the patience part of that is, is important here, because I think that ought to be a lengthy discussion on, on whether or not to do, uh, do away with the TAD. You've got more than baseball and TAD, you've got A.J. McClung, you've got the Liberty District, you've got a lot of different areas that are, that are in that, that are impacted by the TAD, so-
We have sports in there.
I think your first comments earlier were right, it would serve us well to slow it down and try to make sure we're getting what we want done.
Can we have the TAD conversation on the, the work session?
We certainly can.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. I, I just need some clarification, we're, from the City Attorney, were you referring to my motion of the referendum when you said that, that we needed a petition from 5% of the citizens?
Yes.
So, so the process to put a referendum on the ballot, can you, can you go through that one more time? Because I think citizens, it's, it's going to require some citizens' involvement, and if they really want this referendum on the ballot in May of 2026, they're going to have to take some actions in order for, for council to make that vote.
That's right, or you could ask the General Assembly to put something on a referendum. You'd pass a local bill on the 26th session of the legislature, you could ask for that, or you use 6-400 of the charter. This is, "Any proposed ordinance, including an ordinance for repeal or amendment of any ordinance, then in effect, may be submitted to council by petition signed by at least 5% of the total number of registered voters of the consolidated government last regular, uh, regular election. All petitions circulated with respect to any proposed ordinance shall be uniform, contain the proposed ordinance in full, have printed names of voters, who should be officially regarded as filing petition, etc." I mean, this is an elaborate procedure.
Okay, so can you tell me, it's charter, what, where is that in the charter?
6-400.
6-400. Okay, and do you know of the timeframe that all of this would have to be done in order for it to be on the ref, be a referendum on the May 2026 ballot?
We'd have to talk to the election folks, but I think 90 days out, they start preparing, and they need 60 days' notice to advertise things before an election, so, you're talking February, March timeframe of '26.
Okay, Nancy, if you're watching this, can you get with me? Thanks. Or I'll get with you. Okay, thanks for that clarification, I appreciate it.
But yeah, those are the only methods, that's the charter, a, a method with the elaborate procedure. It may have been used once, that I can remember in my lifetime for some kind of a budget cap on the Columbus Council budget, but other than that, I don't recall it being used.
All right, well, Mr. City Attorney, it's your agenda, so we'll let you keep the floor.
Okay, we've got a number of business items to get through to Mayor. First one up is the demolition of eight structures, ready for a vote.
All right, there's a motion, and a second to approve demolition of the eight- All right, there's a motion in a second to approve demolition of the eight structures that are listed on here. Any one that anyone would like to have pulled to discuss? All right, hearing none. If you'd put it on the screen, it's up there, so if you would, please, councilors, register
There you go. Got it?
That's approved.
That's approved. Next ordinance is a paid maternity, paid paternity leave policy.
Motion second to approve the paid maternity and paternity leave policy. Any discussion on that? All right, please put it on the screen, councilors, you can vote.
That passes. We've got some new hourly rates for Parks and Rec personnel.
All right, there's a motion in a second to approve the new pay rates at Parks and Rec, Aquatics Division. Any discussion on that? All right, please put it on the screen. Councilors, you can vote.
That's approved. Okay, we've got several zoning hearings to go through, Mayor. The first one up is property at thirty-two, twelve, Sixth Avenue. Maria Lopez's petition wants to go from residential multifamily two to residential multifamily one with conditions. It's recommended for approval. Is the petitioner here, Ms. Lopez?
All right, anyone against it?
Mr. Renfro is here, but without the petitioner. Mayor, we have delayed these things in the past.
Well, we probably should put it on first reading till the petitioner can be here to state their case.
Isn't that what we've done in the past, Mr. Renfro, without a petitioner?
Yes, yes, sir. That's typically what's done in the past. We'll alert her again and let her know she needs to be here.
She needs to be here. That'll be on first reading next time. Next zoning hearing is forty-two, forty-six, forty-two, forty-third Avenue, going from light manufacturing to residential multifamily one. So Harley-Hoad petition, the petitioner here. We'll go and bring that back in two weeks also, Mayor. The next zoning item is thirty-fifty-one Reece Road. Divine Investments, Jermaine Morgan. The petitioner's here. All right, they are present. They want to go from single-family residential two to single-family residential four. Recommended for approval. Are there any questions around the table?
Don't see any.
All right. Mr. Renfro, unless you have any comments, anybody in the audience want to be heard? The petitioner is here. All right, you don't have to come up. We will vote on that in two weeks. Council will take an official vote. Thank y'all for being here. Next zoning petition is eleven thousand one. Should be the correct address, River Road. They want to go from residential estate ten to residential estate one. So Sly Property, Andrew Norris, petitioner, are they here? Okay. They are here. It's recommended approval. Any questions around the table? It's in Councilor Davis's district. Anybody want to be heard in the audience? Okay. Mayor Pro Tim will bring that one back for a vote in two weeks. And the last zoning hearing is property at ten forty-six Thirty-third Street, going from residential multifamily two to residential multifamily one with conditions. It's a Christian Briggs petition. Are they here? All right. Says recommended approval. Any questions around the table? Anybody in the audience want to be heard? All right, on the Briggs petition, they'll vote in two weeks. Thank you for being here. Okay. Mayor Pro Tim, the next item is Counselors Tucker and Crabbe are sponsoring this housekeeping measure to animal services, chapter five of the Columbus Code with the changeover to pause. This resets certain fees and duties. And I know Ms. Riley is here. She's welcome to comment, but are there any questions around the table?
I don't see any.
Okay, Ms. Riley, did you want to say anything? They're just, they're going to vote in two weeks, if you're good with that. Okay. We'll bring it back then. Counselor Tucker is one of the sponsors. We'll bring it back in two weeks. Our last ordinance listed, Mayor Pro Tim, is the change, one simple change for demonstration, festival permits. Health and safety measures will be utilized according to Uptown guidelines. This is police health, safety measure for demonstrations and festivals held in the Uptown District and the CRD District. Any questions about that? There's been a lot of discussion with the police on this, and it is Counselor Cogle's district.
Yeah, I know that there are some representatives here from, I mean, Uptown as well as Sergeant Phillips from the Police Department. If anybody has a question or wants to hear from either one of them, it's on first reading. Ma'am, if you want to come up and speak, you certainly may.
I want to make sure I heard you correctly. You say there are changes in the paper you get for demonstrations? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
There is a change to that.
Okay, I would like to understand the changes, please.
Well, along with the guidelines that are in the current ordinance for demonstrations and festivals, they're adding a provision that says applications for demonstrations and festivals held in the CRD, a Central Riverfront District, or Uptown Zoning District, will demonstrate compliance with the checklist of requirements adopted by the Board of Uptown Columbus as a condition for any demonstration or festival in those areas. And this is to protect anybody coming to an event, visitors. These are safety measures that the police and the Uptown organization have agreed on.
Ma'am, if you would, state your name and your address, please.
Carolyn Chaney, sixty-four oh four Fairmount Road. So usually, in the past, you just go there and you get your demonstration permit. And they told me that if it's more than two or three persons, I need a permit. But for one person, you don't need a permit. And so I'm listening to you, but it seems to be the same thing. You just want to know who's demonstrating. Is that right?
That's pretty much correct. I think, I think that if there's, if you've got less than ten...
Anything under fifteen people, ma'am, does not require a permit.
That's right. Okay, just wanted to hear that out. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on that? This, Cogle is one of the sponsors. We'll bring it back for a vote next time. That's all the questions.
Did Steve Morris have any comments that you wanted to make? If not, okay.
Is he here?
All right, Sergeant Phillips, thank you for being here as well.
Okay. Appreciate that. Mayor, we've only got a request for one, maybe fifteen-minute executive session on real estate acquisition and disposal and potential litigation. And it pains me to do this, my Bulldog family, but I promised my Florida cousins I would say, "Go Gators" on television. So congrats to the Gators. That's all we have.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move to the public agenda. Once again, everybody will have five minutes. And I'll try to give you a little warning, a little high sign when you get to about a minute left, but there should be a timer up there that you can reference. First individual is Mr. Gregory Foster, representing the Chatham Woods Neighborhood
My name is Gregory Foster. I reside at fifty-four, forty-six, Chatham Woods Court, Columbus, Georgia. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I am the president of the Chatham Woods Neighborhood Association, and I represent the one hundred and sixty-one households in our subdivision. We recently had one of our quarterly meetings, and it was decided that we would publicly thank our District One Councilman, Mr. Byron Hickey. Please allow me a moment to explain and provide some context. In December, a group of wild hogs, known as a sounder, began rooting in our subdivision. They tore up lawns and gardens and several yards. These very large and dangerous animals just showed up out of nowhere and apparently liked Chatham Woods so much, they kept coming back. The tracks that they left reveal that they were entering our subdivision through various backyards on the eastern side of Chatham Woods. Understand that many of the backyards on those lots are intentionally unfenced because a lot of the residents enjoy such a picturesque woodline. But that all changed when about a dozen voracious wild hogs just showed up and began eating everything that they came in contact with. Some of the families with school-aged children were very concerned because the hogs are rooting across the street from one of our school buses, bus stops. We quickly concluded that we needed to take immediate action. One of the first things we did was contact Councilman Hickey, initially just to find out the legal parameters for responding to this type of situation. Councilman Hickey did not hesitate. He came out to Chatham Woods and walked our perimeter with us. He assessed the property damage. He noted the potential for the spread of disease from these feral animals. And he understood the very real threat to the personal safety of the residents, especially our children. The level of concern that Councilman Hickey demonstrated was very appreciated, particularly by some of our understandably anxious parents. His action calmed what had become a very tense atmosphere in our subdivision. To give you all an idea of how serious the situation was for us, many of our residents spent the Christmas holiday season putting up fences in their neighbors' yards to keep the hogs out of Chatham Woods. And some residents that were not physically able to help install fences donated money, paying for some of the fencing. These efforts afforded Councilman Hickey the time to muster the support of Mayor's office and the city manager's team. So we'd also like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Mr. City Manager. However, please forgive us if we show a special appreciation for Councilman Hickey's efforts. He remained in contact with us almost daily and worked tirelessly facilitating the required actions that led to the successful trapping and extermination of that entire sounder of wild hogs. If any of you wish to see the effort it took to trap these wild hogs, the contractor that was hired by the Consolidated Government, Jäger Pro, chronicled the entire operation. Because of the topography, the unusual snowfall that we had in December, and just the difficulty in trapping these incredibly intelligent animals, Jäger Pro had to overcome some serious challenges. The video of all their endeavors is available on the Jäger Pro website and on YouTube. The video is titled, "Jäger Pro Thirty-eight: Chatham Woods Urban Capture." I often tell my neighbors, "We are our greatest asset." But we have learned that Councilman Hickey is also a most valuable, valued benefit to Chatham Woods and our great friend. So from this point forward, he is an honorary member of the Chatham Woods subdivision. On behalf of all of my neighbors, who have become my friends, who have become my family, I would like to say thank you very much, Councilman Hickey. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please join me in giving a round of applause to Councilman Hickey for a job well done? Now, Mr. Mayor, if it's not a breach of protocol, I would like to present Councilman Hickey with the Chatham Woods Neighborhood Association certificate. And it reads, "The certificate of appreciation is awarded to Councilman Byron Hickey for work tirelessly to protect the property and safeguard the residents of the Chatham Woods subdivision. His genuine care and concern for the one hundred and sixty-one families that make up the neighborhood is a stellar example of the dedicated service he recurrently provides to his constituents and brings great credit upon himself in the Columbus Consolidated Government."
Mr. Foster, thank you, sir. No, that would not be, we don't have any objection to you presenting that at all.
Okay. I really appreciate it. We have something else. And I remember Chatham Woods Neighborhood Association t-shirts.
Oh, wow.
Various sizes. And once again, I have to tell you that you've really helped us in our time meeting. And my people were happy to host some of the Republican events.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Councilor Hickey, I know you don't want to say anything.
I would like to say something, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, you know, I just want to give God all the praise and glory. When I was, when I had the opportunity to take this seat, it was always and have always never been about me. It's about the constituents of District One and the citizens of Columbus. And I'm just grateful to God for the opportunity to be able to serve again in this community. After thirty years of law enforcement, I was presented with this opportunity again. And when Mr. Foster reached out to me concerning this issue, I never had to deal with wild hogs. I just, I didn't know what to do, who to go to. But I reached out to the mayor, reached out to the city manager, and they was able to give me some directions. And when Mr. Foster asked me to come out to walk the property with him, I was able to observe all the damage that they had done along that woodline and even coming up into the front yards of neighbors, residents out there. And that was very frightening for me because when you talk about little kids that are out getting on the school bus, waiting for the bus to come, or getting out of school, just the idea that they can be attacked by these wild hog, these feral hogs. And after doing some research myself, I learned that they, you know, you can be attacked by them. They will attack you. And so after getting, speaking with the mayor, Director Short, the city manager, Director Short, we was able to get Jäger Pro, who is a contractor that we use. And if you have not had the opportunity to look at the video, look at it. It is amazing what they do. This is money well spent with Jäger Pro. It's money well spent. The process that they go through, the details of trapping these wild feral hogs, and then the part of putting them down and getting them out of the area, it was just amazing. It's like a nine-minute clip. I was going to ask IT to play it today, but I know that probably wouldn't set well what a lot of us were trying to get out of here today. But if you have opportunity, go to Jäger Pro and look up that video on Chatham Woods, and you will see the process. And when Mr. Foster spoke about the intelligence of these feral hogs, there was one that's in the video that, I guess he was the leader, probably, of the feral hogs. He would not go inside of that trap into that area with all the feed out. I think it was like twice, he just hesitated to go inside, you know? But eventually he did. They all were captured. The problem was resolved. So, Mr. Foster, to you and the Chatham Wood subdivision, thank you for this very kind presentation and just recognizing me today. Y'all have warmed my heart with this. And I just want to note to all my constituents in District One, that's what we're here for. We're here for y'all. We're here for... We're here for the citizens of Columbus. So I know a lot of times we make decisions up here that everybody don't agree with, but I promise you, my heart will always put the constituents and the citizens, my decision makes will always put them first. So thank you all for this opportunity, for this presentation today. And I just want to say once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your assistance on this. And, Mr. City Manager, thank you for your assistance on this. And Director Short. And yes, if IT could add the video to CCG, that would be great also. So once again, thank you, everybody. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations. We're glad they got the hogs out of Chatham Woods. Next up is Mr. Joseph McNeil Senior, representing the Blinded Veterans Association, Georgia Regional Group, Columbus Chapter. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. We're back here again today. My name is Joseph McNeil. I'm at the 6245 Seminary Road, Columbus, Georgia. We're back again. Metro, Dollar Ride. It's been a little bit over a year since we've implemented this premium service. Now, prior to that, you had the special mode. The special mode was a failure because of disenfranchised, low-income veterans and disabled veterans, they had to use it because you had to come all the way downtown in order to get over to the new clinic that some genius aside was a good location where transportation was provided. Now you'd be going to the premium service, but premium service is a failure. You've got two ways of doing things in Columbus. You've got from north side, east, west, south, you say one Columbus. It's one Columbus for people that have their abilities, but it's a second Columbus for people have disability. We have to sit around and we have to wait 24 hours prior to, before we can use or call in Dollar Ride to get a ride there, where everybody else has two weeks out. It becomes a problem because you call in eight o'clock in the morning, and I'm going to give credit to Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith accommodates everybody, but when he has 190 people already on the roster for the next day, it's kind of hard to start booking 12 people or more inside something that's already been scheduled. It's inconvenience. We try to go to council meetings where we communicate with each other. We help as a support group. Without this support group, we have some serious mental issues. If you don't understand what I'm saying, blindfold yourself and walk around for the day. We have to talk to each other, and it's an inconvenience for us to have to go through this that we may not be able to get there, or I have to find a way to work you in. I hate to say it, but if the wrong person answers that phone, you're one step away from a lawsuit. I had your deputy director of Metro call me Friday, wanted to know what I wanted. What I wanted was an exception to policy, the same thing I asked before. Somebody write the exception to policy to FDA, the Federal Transit Authority, requesting that they drop this premium service because you have the authority to make it one service, ADA compliant. All you need to do is write the compliance letter, but it won't be done. When I asked him why won't he write it, it's up to senior leadership. He's pushing the can off to you. The problem I have with that is he's the deputy manager. Why can't he write it? Because he's afraid to speak up and say something? Somebody needs to do something and fix it so that we do not have to jump through hoops 24 hours out in order to get to something that we should have been able to plan for two weeks prior. It's a shame. We shouldn't have to jump through this. We shouldn't have to do through this. If keep saying one Columbus, then make it one Columbus, one ADA. It shouldn't matter where we live, it has to be premium service. It's a word. Premium service. It's the same service. It's ADA. We shouldn't have to go through it. We shouldn't have to come here and grovel, asking for you to do something that should be done right. We do not have to go through this. We shouldn't have to go through this. You do not know the mental anguish it is for everybody. Are we going to be able to get a ride? If we can't get a ride, how are we going to get there? Somebody said, "Well, VA provides service." Well, the special mode of transportation from VA, guess what? Only if you qualify can you ride in it, only to medical appointments. Going to a group meeting is not a medical appointment. They will not pick you up. Half of us do not qualify for that. So please, write the letter. Send it to the FDA. It's better you do it and let them tell you, no, you can't do it than not to do it and don't know. Do you have any questions?
Yes. Counselor Tucker?
Ms. Tucker?
Yes, thank you to my fellow brother-in-arms for coming down today. And again, thank you all for letting me fellowship with you during Blinded Veteran Appreciation. I'm trying to see last week or week before last. I can't remember. Everything's kind of meshing together. You do bring up valid points. I can't remember exactly when you came and stood right there at that podium, providing this information. And I know that council had requested a... I think we did ask for a study regarding the paratransit and how we can make it more accessible because we need to address the issues that you and others have brought up regarding paratransit. I see that we have an item on the city manager's agenda. I think it's Item E. And I'm not sure if that item addresses the paratransit or... I'm not sure if that addresses the paratransit, if that was the study that we requested, or is something extra additional outside of what we talked about, you know, over a year ago? But something is on the agenda. I just, I'm not sure exactly what it is. If it's the study that we requested, or is this a different study? Because for some strange reason, I thought we had did the one study.
Yeah, Mayor, we did, and Deputy City Manager is going to speak to it. But we had the session on premium service, which is slightly different or different from paratransit Dollar Ride service. We did that study and we implemented premium service. And what you see on the agenda is another study to look at the metro routes, to include some other things. We're still looking at Brookstone and some other things. That's what's on the agenda. But Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin is going to speak to his concern. I mean, we operate, to get federal dollars, you got to follow their rules. And that's what he's speaking to. And yes, we can ask them to waive rules, but they're going to remain consistent across this country. But Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin will speak.
Before you speak, Deputy City Manager, I did have a question for Mr. McNeil because he is set on some national boards, and he's been very involved with some of the transit, I'm going to say, studies and things dealing with individuals who have other abilities. Because we talked about it at that meeting that we don't want to look at it as a disability. We don't want to look at it as a other ability. So people with other abilities. So I know that you have received information, and we've had these conversations before about what the minimum requirement is, meaning the distance and stuff like that, and versus, you know, what we can do going above and beyond. And I'm asking because you have this information in reference to those standards. Is it a minimum or maximum? How does that work and how can the information that you have, meaning you've been, you know, going through this for so many years? What is it that you can provide to us to help us in making these decisions?
Under the current guidelines, paratrans can go 0.5 miles outside where fixed route is. The problem that we have with Columbus, the fact that it's going north and it's going east over the 30-plus years that I've been here, the transit itself has not gone that way. Now, a lot of it's got to do with new subdivisions, apartments, and stuff being put in. Now, when people do move into those places, they may have all their faculties. Nobody's planning on going blind, not be able to drive, any other kind of injury. So now you need transportation. So if the routes, in my mind, seeing the way, I grew up in Philadelphia, everything's a grid setup, the way the buses, trains, trucks, everything run. We have a circular system which runs back toward the transfer point, one transfer point. Maybe we need to relocate and put a second transfer point further east and then change the circle system to a grid system where it could reach more of Columbus itself and which will extend the range of paratransit. But until we can extend the range of paratransit, those people that are living in those areas are the ones that are affected that can't get out. And when you can't get out of your house, that makes you sick. That makes you less healthier. Now you've got more issues that you've got to get to doctors and things. We want to get out. We've got to get out.
Well, thank you, Mr. McNeil, for providing that information. And I know the Deputy City Manager is coming to the side of you. She wanted to provide some information in reference to the item that's on the agenda.
And so I will say to Mr. McNeil, thank you, and we hear your concerns. And if we can figure out a way to address them and fall within the federal guidelines, we certainly want to do that. And our service in Columbus is much different from Philadelphia or Atlanta, Georgia. And because we provide service based on demand. And in Atlanta, I mean, you can get a bus every 10 minutes, every 15 minutes, or you can get the train. And in Philadelphia, it would be similar. But here, it's based on demand. If you remember, when we received the 2012 T-Splas, we went out, we did a study, and we went out and we expanded bus routes based on what we heard in the study. In fact, we were providing service until midnight under the 2012 T-Splas. And we had more buses out. We were, you know, we, based on what we heard, we, people said they would use it. And then, if you remember, we gradually started cutting back. Nobody was riding, you know, our buses were coming in at 8:15, 8:30 every evening until we expanded with the T-Splas because we got $25 million to do it. And then, you know, nobody was riding at midnight, and so we cut the service back to 10 o'clock. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, you remember that. And we just couldn't get the ridership. And so we kept gradually cutting back because we had hired new, you know, drivers and got the buses we need. And I think we ended up kind of right back where we started.
That's right. In that 2012 T-Splas that you're speaking of, we did the actual, the study in 2016. And in 2016, when we did that study, it was to increase bus routes, and we increased them from nine bus routes to 12 bus routes. We increased the service hours, as he indicated, to 11:30 PM, from 8:30 to 11:30 PM. And then we changed some bus routes to accommodate some new developments and those kinds of things. But then we came back in 2018 to do a relook at where we were with the 2016 study and determined that, first of all, that people were not using it as indicated. And we did not want to just continue to pour good money down the drain. And so they came back, and then those service hours were changed back to an earlier time. And that was a 2016 and a 2018 study. And so what we have on the agenda today is, again, a comprehensive look at the Dollar Ride system. But it will also include the Brookstone area that we're talking about. And so just to kind of give you a little information and update just about paratransit, the Dollar Ride system. And we have a map here, and I want to be able to show you. Now, there are two systems that we have. Dollar Ride is a required ADA service requirement for any system that operates a fixed route system. And that Dollar Ride is required to go 3/4 of a mile around the fixed route service. That's a required. We have no choice. Even with that, we cannot change any of that or we can't add things regardless of the trip purpose of a person that's certified eligible for our paratransit service. You know, with regard to their trip purpose, with regard to capacity constraints, we have to provide that service, no matter where they want to go, what they want to do in terms of the number of buses or employees that we have. We cannot turn them away under the ADA required service. And they can schedule up to two weeks in advance. That's what the federal government tells us, that they can schedule up to two weeks in advance. Now, the premium service that we have, and the premium service we provide to the VA and Brookstone area as well, that is premium. Now, when we came back to you and did the, the consultant came back and provided information to you, a resolution was passed by the council in February of 2024. And that, yes, it was 2024. And when that was passed, there were certain requirements based on the federal government of things that we said we would do with the premium service. And one of those things was, of course, that any trip within either a pickup or a drop-off location outside of the required ADA service area is considered a premium trip. So the map that you see, the yellow part around that gray, that's premium service. And that premium service cannot in any way impact that gray area, which is the required ADA area. So we cannot provide, the yellow part, the premium, can't impact what we do for the gray area, which is our required FTA area. Eligible riders, again in the resolution. Eligible riders may request a premium trip, but no more than one day prior to the travel. Metro will accommodate the premium.
And I think that's his issue, right?
That's his issue.
So with Dollar Ride, you can schedule it and you can schedule it two weeks out.
Out.
But with a premium service...
It's 24 hours.
You can only schedule for 24.
And all of this is, again, based on the FTA requirements. FTA will not allow us because everything that we do is based on the law, the circulars of FTA, the federal register. And so when that federal register, it gives us our parameters and our guidelines of how we operate. Now, certainly, we wish we could go anywhere they want to go in the city, but again, it's based on those parameters. 3/4 of a mile, regular Dollar Ride service, premium service is 3/4 of a mile around that, but it's, the difference is, they can only schedule one day in advance. Now, what you have on the agenda today for approval, again, is the comprehensive study. Now, that was asked, requested by council in December of 2023. That's when they asked for this study, or asked for this service for Brookstone. But that was FY '24. That was considered in the midst of the budget. Well, we put the budget, we put the study amount in the FY '25 budget. And so you approved that for FY '25. But because there were some issues, of course, with us working with, you know, purchasing had, had some people to abruptly retire to. And so, you know, with some things, some challenges that they had, challenges that the department had, we are now able to get that study on the agenda for your approval. We've gone through all the steps. If approved today, we still have to go out to the public and get public input for anything that we do here. But if all goes well, if approved, if the study comes back the way we want, the premium service goes away. That means then we're hoping to just extend the fixed route service, I mean, the paratransit service to accommodate, which is now the premium, but it'll go further. That means then there is no one day, you know, where they can call in one day. They can call in now, just like Dollar Ride, 24 hours, two weeks in advance. That's the hope with the study that we have on the agenda for approval today, that we're able to do that. But again, it takes time. You know, a lot of people think that, you know, all we can do is just, let's just move the bus stop over here, move it up because people need to... let's just move the bus stop over here, move it up because people need to, let's just change things. There's a lot that we have to do in terms of making sure that we follow the guidelines established by the federal government. They're our funding agent. That's where we get our money from. And so no matter what it looks like, you know, we have to follow that process. And this is the first step in getting us to where we need to be in terms of that process. Approval, then, of course, the consultant will work with us. We'll do some public input meetings and hoping that we're able to get rid of the premium service and expand the dollar ride service. So that's the hope.
So you would have to expand the fixed route in order to expand the dollar ride.
Absolutely.
And as he said, you know, I mean, it's three quarters of a mile. So in order to get out to the yellow area, you gotta send your bus, regular bus routes out further.
A little further.
That you can, you know, I mean, that's what you're doing.
And that's what we're hoping will happen with this study. But the study has to take place. We can't just go out there and just haphazardly change it. We have to wait for the consultants to help us with this.
I was, I was just unclear of which study was which. But thank you for providing that information.
And no further questions. Thank you, Deputy City Manager.
Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. On that, on that map, it looks like a lot of this, a lot of these issues can be dealt with by just expanding. I see where it ends there at, on Bradley Park Drive. And I've been told that that is the Cracker Barrel. But if it goes down, if you extend that down Bradley Park Drive to River Road, go up River Road, it'll catch the VA clinic and up to Double Churches and then come back over and make that little loop up there. That seems like it would resolve a lot of the issues that we're having in that area.
Yeah. And of course, when you make changes to that area, we're on what we call a pulse system. And the pulse system is where buses meet up at various times to make connections. And they have to get back to the transfer center at a particular time so that they can then, of course, all of the routes can make their connection. If we make a change in any miles or hours of service, that impacts that unless we look system-wide to make sure it all comes together.
You may have to add an additional bus.
That's right.
And driver to make the pulse system work. And, but then, when you extend that route, I mean, you want to extend it with the thought that there are going to be riders on the extended part, not just, I mean, we can extend it and send the bus out there just to be within the federal guidelines to say, we're going to go all the way to this point, though we know there's not going to be any riders, so that we can get the dollar ride three-fourths miles on up to the VA clinic. I mean, you're playing games, really. And the federal government, they do what you call a triannual review.
Which we're getting ready to, taking care of now. We're working on that now. And they come in, they look at everything that we do.
That's right.
And from operations, the finances, the grants, the maintenance, our, you know, our buses, and, you know, they look at everything. They tear us apart. And then, you know, and they're expecting us to make sure that we have followed every guideline that they have presented to us. If not, then our funding is impacted.
So we hear the concern, and I think this study may be able to
Yes.
help us address some of the concern.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda is Stanley Dixon, past and present initiatives. If you would give your name and address and start the clock after you finish that.
Well, Mayor, I understand your pain. I'm a little stiffed up myself. I'm just, I learned a lesson today. Do not drink water prior to coming into these meetings. Wow. Yeah. My name is Stanley Dixon. I'm a constituent of District Four. I live at 820 Warren Bay Creek Court, Columbus, Georgia. I want to thank Councilwoman Tucker on the amazing work you are doing for District Four. Your transparency, integrity, and your future foresight is a blessing to District Four and this city. I want to thank the city council members for volunteering your service. Whether I agree or disagree with your decisions, I know it's for the betterment of this city. There's a few citizens that consistently attend the city forum and spill partisan rhetoric. They try to bully and intimidate members of council decisions. I simply ask the council members to allow policy with integrity and transparency to support your decisions. Thank you and the law enforcement of Columbus for the amazing improvement in protecting and serving the citizens of Columbus. Your decision, your decision to hire a new police chief was the catalyst to this change. In regards to law enforcement, I disagreed with your decision to give a tremendous amount of money to a nonprofit organization that was in support of the police department to identify high crime areas. I believe that was a decision that was made to patronize the citizens during a challenging time in regards to high crime. I believe all funds allocated to law enforcement should go directly to law enforcement with their decision of usage. Nonprofit organizations that receive money from the city needs to be highly vetted with transparency, proof of success that supports the city. Results should match the money. In regard to the city employment, no city employee is beyond reproach. The city council is guided by policy and procedure to investigate employees of the city. If the city council can elect a city official, the council can also relieve that official of their duties. I disagree with the council's decision to renovate the minor league baseball field. Ice hockey, arena football, ice skating are not supported by the majority of citizens. The revenue would verify my claim. The whitewater rafting is a good attraction for the city. The city has went all in for the whitewater rafting, but it's drowning. Now, the city has invested millions into building pickleball courts. My fingers are crossed. Besides taxes and utilities, one of the best revenue gains in this city is the lottery. The revenue gain from the lottery directly supports the citizens of Columbus through many ventures, education leading the way. Here's a rhetorical question. Where's the casino? I see a lot of good infrastructure taking place in the city, and I'm excited about more to come. Here's a fun fact. Columbus is the second-largest city in Georgia. The Liberty Theater renovation is a great opportunity for the city. I hope the city spared no expense. The rich history of the Liberty Theater demands a classy environment with the best ventures to entertain the city of Columbus. We, and we represents every adult that resides in Columbus, have failed the children of Columbus. We have not given our kids anything to develop their social skills beyond a school environment. We have not given our kids an environment to simply be kids and have fun. I believe 97.3% of voters will support building a 21st century facility that provides a 21st century outdoors and indoors gaming activities.
Mr. Dixon, I apologize, sir, but your five minutes are up. However, if you want to wait around, we'll allow you three additional minutes at the end of the clerk's agenda.
I got 20 seconds.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up. And if I let you go 20 seconds, I'll have to let everybody else as well. I apologize. Thank you.
No need to apologize. Thank you all. Thank you for your service. And I look forward to meeting more ventures.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. All right, next is Mr. Ricky Lynn, Rep. Council, I'm sorry. Yeah. Counselor Tucker.
Mr. Dixon, I just want to say thank you for speaking today. It was, it was very pleasant and direct, and you showed that we shouldn't be IIs or Mm-me's. We should be We-wees and Us-us. And I think, I think we need to hear that more often. And also, I just want to say I appreciate the way you presented that we can agree to disagree, and we can be civil, and we can be respectful. And I appreciate you representing District Four. I rarely get those type of comments up here. Like, almost bring me to tears, like, seriously. It takes a lot to sit in this role and make decisions based on public services and public safety and public health and taxpayers' dollars. And it's not the partisan rhetoric at all in the decisions that we make. And I think sometimes we need to take a civic lesson and understand what all levels of government provide, meaning local government, what the state provide, and what the national level provides because we don't all do the same. So I just appreciate you for your candor and just, and just being you. And I'm gonna reach out to you. I'm gonna get with our clerk so I can make sure. And I know I got your number on my phone.
Mr. Dixon, thank you, thank you. You can take your seat. Counselor can finish her remark, but you'll have to take your seat.
But, but thank you, sir. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
All right, Counselor Hickey.
I just, Mr. Dixon, I just want to echo what Councilman Tucker just said. So we really appreciate those kind words. And on behalf of all the council, council persons up here, all of us, all the council members, we appreciate those kind words. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. All right, next is Mr. Ricky, Ricky Lynn, representing Blinded Veterans Association, Columbus Chapter. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the deputy city mayor still here? I mean, manager? She must have been looking over my shoulder. I wanted to be prepared. But I came to focus on two words along the same lines that our former national president, Mr. Joe McNeil, spoke about concerning the scheduling of what is known as the premium service. Most of the information that she spoke about, I have right here in my hand. Okay? What I'd like to ask, and this isn't a request, this is a ask. Please consider a reasonable modification to the premium service. As Mr. McNeil was explaining, for someone like myself, I'm not an early riser. I sleep till 11 o'clock. I don't have, I wish I could work, but due to my vision, I can't. So I don't have a set schedule. So for me to schedule on the premium service, I have to set an alarm for 8:00 AM at the minimum. And the main reason I do that is to be considerate of the scheduler, Mr. Robert Smith at Dollar Ride, at the transit system. For me not to consider what he has to go through, I would be wrong. Although the city is providing, you know, you're providing a service for us. And hopefully, with the information that the deputy city manager provided, you all will implement some type of reasonable modification to those rules. All of us know rules are made, but they can be amended. There are ways to amend rules. The FTA, yes. I researched some of that information also. There are rules and guidelines, regulations, that the transit service has to follow. That doesn't mean it can't be amended. That doesn't mean someone can't take a moment or two and write a letter or type a letter and make a reasonable request for a reasonable modification to those rules. That's the simple thing we're asking for. It's real simple. Just consider a reasonable modification to the rules and regulations that the government has set for all transit systems to follow. I believe it could be done. Someone once told me, words are the most powerful tool on this earth. I believe that. And again, I only have two words, reasonable modification. Please. Now, I'd like to take a moment, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and recognize Ms. Toria Tucker. Also, thank you all for the proclamation that you provided to the Columbus Chapter of the Blinded Veterans Association in honor of the Blinded Veterans Association 80th year anniversary, which was celebrated on March 28th. We had a gathering at our monthly meeting on the 27th, which we meet the last Thursday of each month at the Porte Chef Clinic. I was going to bring that up also because there's only one day a month that you could assist us. If we could just have a little more time to schedule those rides, schedule those trips, it would be so helpful, not only to us, the riders, but to Mr. Smith, the employee officer. Consider him in this because he plays an important role. Yeah. Yeah, we put the $2.50 in the little money thing, but he's the one that has to sit behind that desk or wherever he sits, look at that computer screen, answer that telephone. I got to get these people scheduled. I only got, well, now I got less than 24 hours to do it because they got to be up there at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Just consider that. Thank you, Councilwoman Tucker, for presenting that proclamation to us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the council, for making these small things available that can make a difference to some of the organizations, including nonprofit organizations like ours, the Blinded Veterans Association.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Appreciate you, sir. Counselor Tucker?
Yeah, I'm sorry, y'all. I want to thank you, Mr. Ricky, and also Joe. Joe, I have my coin. I can come out there and touch you. I do have my coin. So coin check on you, sir. But I just, I just want to add, that is a good point, which you said for reasonable modifications. I'm not sure how we could do that with them having that one Thursday meeting. And they were crowded. We went to, I'm trying, what's the restaurant? I can't. First Watch. We went to First Watch, and the bus came promptly, picked them up, came promptly back and picked them up again to drop them off. But I didn't know that they had to call at 8:00 in the morning to set that up. And I'm not, and I get what you're saying, you know, city manager, but in reference to if it's something that we can do for a once a month, you know, if it's if it's planned every month and it's crowded, we, I think we laughed, and I said I wasn't going to forget. We laughed and we cried. I shared sadly on that day on March 27th. That was the day that my grandma passed, you know, last year. And I, I was not really wanting to be out, but they lifted my spirit so much. And I think I spent probably about six hours with y'all that day. But, but the, the thing is, if it's something that, that we can do, if it's just that one day, because they, they can't, it's, it's nothing else that's offered. I mean, in reference to, you know, the VA, because they go each, um, each time they have that meeting, they go out for lunch, you know, fellowship. And it was actually Mr. Ricky's birthday on that day, and we celebrated, um, his birthday. But they do this once a month and it's, I'm, I'm appreciative of our metro workers, and I actually had snapped a photo. But, I mean, they're, they're extremely professional, courteous, and, and helpful to those veterans. And we have a full, I mean, a full bus. We have a full bus. I don't know how we can, you know, do a reasonable modification when we're talking about whether it's, you know, they can call like the day prior for, for something that's, I'mma say a standard standing, you know, monthly occurrence. Like this is ongoing every month. It's not, you know, different each time. Is it something that we can do in reference to a standing, you know, event meeting?
Hang on.
Mayor, I can certainly have them to take a look. And of course, you know, if it can be done, they'll do it. But they are stickler for following the federal guidelines. And, and so if, if, if they can, they will, but they will certainly look. You want?
We just want to make clear, if, if we do it for any one group, we have to do the same thing for anyone who calls for the same purpose. And so it would be a little difficult for us to say, you know, that we're doing it for them. But what we can, but what they can do is if they were to get inside of the Dollar Ride ADA area, three quarters, perhaps have their meeting at another location, then they can schedule two weeks out every time, if there were another location outside of the premium area.
I think that's, that's what we was laughing at, because, I mean, we can't, we can't change it now. But we put the VA clinic all the way outside of where people would be able to assess public transportation.
Well, somebody did.
And I'm a veteran.
And, and Mayor, I would say.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying.
The, the same thing happened with the Social Security office. I mean, they didn't, they didn't look at where public, we didn't travel up in that area where it's Social Security. We then had to go and adjust the bus route, because it was out, you know, making roads.
That's right.
Same thing with the driver's license.
And same thing with driver's license. But, but they will take a look, and I don't know that there's more than one group or five groups. But, I mean, if it's something that we can figure out, we will. But if, if it's going to break the federal.
All confidence that we can figure out something, whether it's provide not, I, I don't know. You were saying 24 hours, you know, maybe take the call the, the prior day or, or something. So.
So, so we'll look and, and see if we can come up.
Please get in contact with them, because they, I mean, we're talking about December 2023, when we started talking about this. And they faithfully, we talk about accessibility for patrons, for riders and ridership. And we always promoting it, well, this is, this is revenue coming in, because they are faithful riders of transit.
We understand, and we want faithful riders of transit, but we, there's just the federal law guidelines. I mean, it, it, you'd be amazed at, you know, I mean, the federal guidelines are so strict that if we've got one bus, if we buy one bus, and it's a new bus, they want to make sure that you don't put the new bus in the more affluent area. Well, I mean, it's just, they're really, they, they look at everything.
I, I will, I will.
And so that's, so we have to deal with the guidelines.
Can you please help me? Because I, because I do serve on national boards, and we're always looking at, like, we talk about things can be amended, adjusted. We're always working on legislation that will go up to the congressional delegation. And, you know, I meet in February, March in DC. And then in the summertime, I have the annual, and I serve for us on the National Association of County officials at, on the board of directors. So I know that I'm in the room and I can actually talk to people. Can, can we get, can I get the information where I can ask questions in regards to amending it? And be able to talk to individuals about some of the issues that we're having with veterans, you know, who are disabled, who may need more than 24 hours? Especially if they got an appointment at like 10 o'clock and you got to call at 8:00. So just help me.
We'll be happy to give you all the information.
Get the information, the language within the restraints.
The circular.
Right. That way I can have that conversation when I go to the national convention.
Got you.
Thank you.
Counselor Kogle?
Can you just help me, or help clarify something for me? When, when we say that there is two weeks for within the gray area is what I'm thinking I'm hearing? And then 24-hour booking outside of the gray area, is that in the? What is the reasoning behind only allowing 24? Other than, I think what I'm hearing is that we assign 24 hours? The, the guidelines require us to do 24 hours? And so we cannot change that at all, right?
The, the difference is the gray area is required by the federal government. That this is a service that we must provide.
And are we saying?
Three quarters of a mile around our fixed route service. The yellow is not a required service. It's a service that we're just going above and beyond in providing. So that's the difference.
So are we saying that the yellow requires two weeks or 24 hours?
24 hours, yellow. The gray is up to two weeks, up to two weeks.
You can schedule, so I can call today and schedule arrive.
Two weeks out.
Two weeks out.
If you're in the gray area, which is the federally mandated area.
But you can't do that in the yellow area.
Correct. But did we not, is the yellow area what we put into?
Yes.
Yes, because you, this council decided you wanted premium service.
Right.
Because the federal guideline says that on the ADA, you can go three-fourths of a mile beyond where your fixed route point touches.
So if we said that we are doing the premium service, did we assign the 24 hours? Or is that a federal guideline?
That's a federal guideline for premium service, anything above and beyond the, what's in the gray, which is a required service.
Because that's first and highest priority for the federal government.
That's right.
Okay. All right. I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, next is, uh, Mr. Marvin Broadwater Senior regarding quarterly town hall meetings. Mr. Broadwater, welcome, sir. Glad to see you up moving around.
Man, hey, man. My name is Marvin Broadwater Senior. Uh, I live in the 31909 zip code. And I'll go ahead and request my three extra minutes, Mr. Mayor, at this time. I learned a long time ago, I had a, someone tell me that in democracy, you have to have a negotiator, an agitator, and a rebel. Otherwise, if we didn't have that in this government, we would probably still be under England right now. Think about it. So good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, city administrators and staff. Before I get started, I just wanted to, I would just would like to say thank you all for your service. I was told that every time I come up here, it's, I don't say that. I thought I did. I went back and looked at my agenda, and it does. It said, I said, thank you for your service. Now, I'm not going to agree with everything that you say. You do. And you're not going to agree with everything that I say I do, but that's democracy. I did not come here this morning to Boliviate, but I did come to articulate and pontificate on a few items that I think are truly relevant to the needs of our citizens. Over the last 22 years, I have observed the transformation of this council as it has evolved to less of a representation of our citizens. Some of you might say, well, that is your opinion, Mr. Broadwater. As I was told by a couple of councils since our last meeting, everyone knows, everyone knows that I'm, I'm very vocal. I do not mind relaying information from constituents that are, let's say, a, a little bit more reluctant than I to come here. Since our last council meeting, I've heard the following declarative statements made by councilors to me. Mr. Broadwater, you have an agenda. You roll with a clique. You have a tendency to twist my words. That's why I must record our conversations. Someone told me that you said you are not afraid to get arrested at a council meeting. You have an intimidating presence. Again, only opinions. Of those items mentioned, I can admittedly tell you that one of those labels is absolutely 100% factual and correct, and that is, I do have an agenda. And that agenda is to speak for the youth, the elderly, the veterans, the poor, the domestic abuse, the, and the disabled, or those who feel like their voices would not be heard in this chamber. Some of you may ask, well, why does he feel so compelled to speak here? Honestly, I believe God has placed me in a position to speak on these issues. The second reason is that one time or another, either I or my immediate family could be characterized in one of those categories. I humbly say to you, how do you know if you're doing a great job? If only a minority of your constituents are speaking to you. And how do you know if you're doing a poor job? If, if you only listen to a few? Granted, you are not going, you are not going to be able to please everyone with every decision you render. We are smart enough to realize that. But if you never speak to the people that disagree with you, to hear their side, and a special thank you, I spoke to three council, three council members since this last, last council meeting. And I, we spoke for over three hours, three and a half hours. I just want to thank you for that. But I'm here to tell you, without you having town hall meetings, to listen to all of your constituents, not just the ones that will agree with you, not what, not just the ones who will lift you up, you gotta, you represent all of them. I saw a young man in the store yesterday. He said, Mr. Broadwater, I see you on the council again. I see you talking about, what are you talking about this time? I said, I want them to have town hall meetings. So everybody, and I put my money up to one of the councilors. I told the council, if you have a town hall meeting, I'll buy meals for the first 400 people that show up. That's how serious this is to me. Because if you never hear, and I got some more, I, I'll get out in the last three minutes. But there are so many folks that can't come here in the morning or in the evening because they're doing other things. They're taking care of their kids, they, they're, they're caregivers. They have so many other things that they're doing. But you've got to hear them. You got to hear that you that's contemplating getting in a gang, getting in a gang right now. I yell, I'll be back.
See you in a few minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, next is Mr. Louis Worthy regarding roads and trash. Is Mr. Worthy here? All right. We'll go to Ms. Fran Carpenter regarding the original historic district and trade center master plan. Welcome, Ms. Carpenter.
Thank you. I'm going to do my best to get this done in that five minutes, so I don't need the three minutes, but.
Okay. If you needed, you got it.
I may. I'm Fran Poole Carpenter, and I, I live at 738 Broadway in the original city historic district. I'm going to read it, so I'll be fast. I'm here today to express my concern with the very recently revealed Trade Center Master Plan, which includes construction of a four- or five-story parking garage at the very entrance to the residential historic district. For almost 11 years, my husband and I have made our home near 8th Street in the 700 block of Broadway. When I sit on my front porch, I have a partial view of the Trade Center and a full view of the surface parking lot behind the Marriott, which is the property and the location for the new parking garage. Last summer on a Sunday morning, utility, utility locators came by and put out flags along Broadway and 8th Streets. On further investigation, I discovered that an RFP was being issued to design and build a parking garage across the street from our house. The neighbors requested the city and the Trade Center to hold a neighborhood meeting to explain what was going on, which they did. At that meeting, it became clear to us that there was more going on than the need for a few more parking spaces. It seemed clear that there was a desire to get rid of the old parking garage and make way for a new hotel at the riverfront. At that meeting, we asked city representatives to develop a master plan that would provide us with a more holistic view of the city's plan for our neighborhood and its infrastructure issues. I left there thinking that we would hear from someone who wanted to know what our concerns were. Instead, about a month ago, we were invited to a presentation at the Trade Center outlining a Trade Center master plan that had already been voted on by the Trade Center authority. There were lots of assumptions made as to what our concerns were, but we, the neighbors, were never asked about those concerns. So I want to share with you a few of my concerns, and I believe they are shared by many of my neighbors who feel this project is being rushed along. I'm concerned that the size, height, and scale of this parking deck will detract from the beauty of our historic neighborhood, not to mention that we have no idea what it will look like. I never dreamed when I bought my home that I would walk out and look at a five-story precast concrete parking garage. So I am also worried about my property value. I'm concerned about the increased traffic on 8th Street and on Broadway. We've been told that the city has a plan for 8th Street, but we've yet to see that. We've already heard today a plan to shuttle people to the baseball park, and I assume that's going to be going down Broadway. I'm concerned that we have lots of buses, box trucks, campers, and vans that park along the street in front of our houses during certain Trade Center events. And Haley admits that they have not come up with a plan to mitigate that. This parking garage will increase that problem because it takes away surface parking used by these vehicles now. Those vehicles do not park in a parking deck. But I can tell you that I would rather deal with that a few weekends out of the year than look at a parking deck 24/7/365. As a taxpayer, I'm also concerned that the cost of this project will exceed the funds on hand to pay for it and that it does not meet the stated needs of the Trade Center. Common sense tells us that if the budget is tight, the aesthetics are the first thing to go. According to the brochure to promote the SPOLOST, it indicated that the funds would be used to improve the existing parking facility, not to build a new one. Most of these issues could be dealt with in a holistic master plan developed by a certified historic planner that would protect this jewel of a neighborhood for the whole historic district. In recent months, you have carved out a city block on the south end of the historic district and rezoned it RO. Now you're carving out a city block on the north end of the historic district to build a parking garage. I only have less than a minute. I really want to end on a good, positive note. So I'm going to ask for my three minutes at the end.
You can have it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Well, that'll wrap up the, um, public agenda. And we'll move to the city managers. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Hickey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get into the city manager's agenda, I'd like for Deputy City Manager Pam Hart to come up to the podium. I have a question I want to ask her. I have a question I want to ask her. How are you today?
Just fine, thank you.
In the last council meeting, when you came up and gave the presentation concerning the ARP that you signed off on for Ms. Hughley, you said, it was said that there was a clip where the city manager came before council. I requested that clip. Do you have that clip today? Where, where he came before council?
No, I think what I said, and I would have to go back and look what I said, but I recalled the city manager mentioning that his wife had applied for this grant at some type of a public meeting. And no, I do not have that clip. But we're looking for that.
Okay, okay, well, it, it, it was, because I think, I, I, I got, I got the recording on my phone. The city manager had said that he, that was a clip, and he had had you to pull it. So is there a clip where the city manager came before, and the date, I need the date and the clip, where he came before council and disclosed to council that, and to get their approval, that he was giving this grant to his wife? Is the, is, does that exist? Yes or no?
I have not found a specific clip.
You haven't? Okay, so what was said, so, so what was said the other night was not true. If there's not a clip, then what was said the other night was not true, then?
Well, I, I just want to go, and maybe we need to go back and see what she said.
Yeah, I mean, I think, because, because I know we talked about, about all that, and I know the city manager disclosed to the city attorney and to me when, when he was talking about it. And there is no vote on the individual ARP fund, so there would have been, my, my, from my perspective, no need to go out there and, and tell council any more than we did any of the other, other items, because he went for, well, let me, he went for direction to the city attorney. The city attorney's direction was, she's treated like everybody else. The only thing he suggested, I think, is that he not be involved in signing that particular form, but it was still vetted at the chamber. It was still vetted through our normal processes. I think the city, city attorney...
Okay, so, if, Ms. City Attorney, the charter on Appendix 2 of the Code of Actus and prohibited practices on a disclosure. Can I, Ms. Hodge, can I ask you to read this for me, please? Out for the public, if you don't mind, I give this to you.
Counselor, she doesn't need to read that.
Okay, 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 so, okay, so, so I'll read it, I'll, I'll read it.
Well, and Pam, why don't you put this on the overhead?
I, 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 I'll read it, I'll read it out. Where, where it speaks to the fact that, in the last paragraph, it says, "Any elected official, appointed officer, or employee of the office, department, or agency to which this Code of Actus who shall have any private interest, directly or indirectly, in any contract or matter pending before or within such office, department, or agency, shall disclose such private interest," in brackets, "to the council." To the council. So if there's a clip where that disclosure was presented to council, then I would like to see the clip. And then we can put this to rest.
Well, and, and Ms. Mayor, let me say this. Of course, you know, I've heard several people say, "You, you mentioned this at council." I don't know whether I did or not. But I know that she says, "I'm going to find the clip," and I know even that the city attorney said, "I think you said it at council." But, but what I want you to do is put on the overhead so the public can see what I did do. And so, when this process went through the chamber, and, and from the chamber it came over to the city once the chamber approved it, to verify. And this is not just for her, but for any and everyone who applied for an ARP grant. And so, when it came over to the city for the finance director to verify, of course, all of the applications, whether they were 400 or 600, however many we had, come to the city manager for signature. When it came across my desk, all of those applications, and my wife's application was in that group, here's what I did, and, and I'm going to read this to you and the public can see it. I said, "Pam, Carolyn F. Hughley, State Farm Insurance, has been approved for a small business grant as part of the ARP grant program. My signature is required on all grant awards. Because Carolyn F. Hughley is my wife, I went, I went to visit the city attorney, city attorney Clifton Fay, and Assistant Attorney, City Attorney Lucy Scheftel, for direction. They have advised that you should sign the document as Deputy City Manager by striking my name and title and noting your name and title with your signature." That's the direction they gave me. "I will return the document to you for your signature execution. If you have questions or concerns, please reach out to the city attorney's office." And of course, you can see who, who was copied. City Attorney Fay, Assistant, City Attorney, Assistant City Attorney Lucy Scheftel, the finance director, the deputy city manager, and the mayor. And so, I followed the direction of the city attorney and Assistant City Attorney, and then took that application and gave it to staff and said, "Please give to Pam Hodge for signature." So that was their direction, and I followed that direction.
And Mayor, Mayor, let me add that that advice is the advice we would give anybody if their family member or spouse was involved in any matter pending before the council or the government. That would be not to participate in any discussion, not to participate in any vote, and not to participate in any signature. So that advice was the same that we would have given anybody with a similar situation.
Okay, so I would like to put this on the overhead so the public can see this all, also, the charter, what the charter says. The charter says that this has got to come to the council. That's what the charter says. So if it didn't come to the council, i- if it, if it didn't come to the council, then it's, that's, you know, that's an issue. It's got to come to the council.
It, I, all of those items were eventually provided to the council. They were, and they were made available to the council, I believe.
Not presented for a vote. It, it was just information that was requested.
But there was no vote in that entire process.
There's no vote in that process, yes.
According to the charter, the council, when you bring it to the council, to get, you have to get the council approval and let the council vote to make that happen. Now, if, 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 if everybody, I mean, we can, we can interpret this any way that we want to interpret, but I'm reading what the, what the charter says. And that's all that I'm saying. So if there's a clip, date and time of the clip, and when that information was disclosed to the council, to the council, that she was receiving the grant by the city manager. So that, that's all, and then if, if that's the case, then, I mean, it's clear that she qualified, that, nobody's questioning that. But what's been, but the issue here is that the city manager, it appears, from what the letter he just showed, he went to everybody but the council.
I went and got a legal opinion.
And then, and then whether, whether it was up to the city attorney to direct and to us, but that's what's in the charter, that, that it's got to come to the council, and it didn't come to the council. That's the issue here.
Well, Mayor, as I said, I followed the direction of the, our legal counsel.
Okay.
This, this has been, Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. Every time that I, that I've had to recuse myself from a vote, then, or a discussion, I've been told that I, that I have to state it in council, and then the council has to vote on it, and then I leave. And there was one time that a vote was not taken. I, I spoke to the mayor, and it was concerning Elliot's Walk because of my prior involvement with Neighbor Works Columbus being on their board. And then I was told later that I had to come back in and vote because a vote was not taken by the body, and so my recusal was not effective. That's what I was told, and so I came back in and voted. So every time, so you, you do advise us about, you know, about this part. But every time that we've done, we've followed it, you've also said that we had to disclose it to council, get a vote, and then leave. That's been pretty consistent in my experience.
Still, I thought you were still on. Keep it on.
No, that's all. That is consistent advice that we've given everybody. And in this case, we told the city manager, "Don't participate in signing the document. Have your deputy do it." Because of the conflict provision in the charter. There is no vote that was taken on that item. So that's a different situation when you're talking about a council vote versus what he was asking guidance on is, "Can I participate in this document?" We said, "Absolutely not."
We've got a few other folks, Counselor. Counselor Anker?
Well, I, I agree. It brings up tensions with us. And there is ethics questions, and that's why the city manager brings his deputy city manager to the meeting when it's not on the agenda to try to eliminate it, put it to bed, let it rest, and it won't rest. And I don't believe the, the city attorney necessarily gave him bad advice, but the, the right thing to do would have been for him to bring it forward and talk to city council, who has the voting authority, and it's not listed up there anything about a vote. That's all.
Well, thank you. Counselor Hickey?
So, Mr. City Attorney, are, are you saying that, that this did not have to come to council for a vote? Is that what, is that what you're saying here today?
We were not in charge of the ARP presentation, to my knowledge. None of the recipients came here for a council vote of approval. None of them.
But this was a, a issue dealing with his spouse. And according to the charter, you're saying here today that because it involved his spouse, that he did not need to disclose that to the council?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying I think he did disclose it in a meeting. What I told him in a public meeting, what I told him was, "Do not participate in this document, period."
What, what, what public meeting was that?
I don't know. I think he said it during a public meeting, whether it was a budget meeting or not. I don't know.
We need the clip. We need to see that.
They can look for it.
Okay, so we hadn't found the clip yet. Clerk of Council, did we find anything? A clip or anything in reference to that?
Counsel, excuse me, Counselor Hickey, I was not going through videos looking for clips. I know that I did not see anything in the minutes. Now, that's not to say that something was not said because, of course, we don't dictate, you know, everything that's said in a meeting. If a counselor says, "For the record," or, of course, city manager, mayor, anyone in here says, "For the record," we make sure that we put it in. If any votes are taken, then we make sure to include that as well. But I did not see anything in the minutes. And I believe I checked over three or four years of when the ARP presentations were done, and I know for one year, they were pretty much done almost every meeting, so.
Well, Ms. Mayor, I'd just like to put in a request. If there's a time when he came before council and shared that with the council, please, let's put this to rest and let that clip be played for the public. So that, that, that's what, that's all I'm requesting.
Well, and we'll try to provide you, I think, any assistance in identifying that clip. But I mean, I, to me, the, the challenge we have is, we try to do things legally correctly. So we go see our legal counsel. And although we may differ in our opinions from time to time, when we get that legal counsel's recommendation, it is put to bed. Because if I go to him, I don't want to think that I've got a, well, who else should I maybe tell this to? Because, city manager said it to me, copied me on the, on the, on the email, got direction. Didn't just say, "Hey, I'm going to do this." Said, "Hey, this is the situation. What do I do?" Got legal advice on how to proceed and, and not blackout or completely obliterate or redact his name and signature, but just put a thin line through it and add the deputy city manager. That way, for the record, it's there. There was, I mean, to me, this, this is, this is much ado about nothing. Because he got advice.
Well, 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 I, I disagree with you on that.
There's so many situations where we use common sense, and not just we, but where this council uses common sense, and they are in situations where you could make an argument that it violated everything from curment to somebody's other's.
It's about much of nothing. I, I disagree with that. But what I will ask you, Mr. City Attorney, is this. Please give this council your interpretation of when it, what that says and highlighted in yellow, and what does that mean? What's your, what's your professional op, not opinion, your, your professional legal sense of what that means? Can, can you share that with the, with the council and with the public right now? By bringing that to, to public?
Sure, it says, "Shall disclose to the council," would normally mean they'd send an email or a letter. But in this case, we were asked a question. "Can I participate in the signing of this document?" And we said, "No, you should not because of the conflict rule in the charter." End of story. Now, if you want to take something else to the district attorney, attorney, or another authority, you're free to do so, but that's our opinion.
Okay, all right. Just need that on the record. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move forward with the city manager's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I've got, excuse me, Landon Land Right-of-Way. So the approval...
Motion in a second to approve the right-of-way of the Landon's Lane. Any discussion? All right, put it on the screen, please, and counselors, please vote. All right, that's approved.
Next, Ms. Mayor, I've got a juvenile justice incentive grant, $750,000. There's no match.
Motion in a second to add, approve the grant. The HUD submission, I apologize. Any discussion on that, I have. All right, hearing none, please put it on the screen. And counselors, you can vote.
Or I'm a yes on that.
Okay. Please record Counselor Hickey's vote as yes.
Next, I've got a congressional-directed funded grant. No match.
All right, there's a motion, a second on items, that's three, four, and five?
Four and five.
Four and five. All right, so any discussion on that? Hearing any, please put it on the screen. Counselors, you can enter your vote.
I thought we did.
Did we miss number three, I believe?
No, because we, we approved two when...
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right. Okay. Let's Counselor Kogle find out.
Okay, so that's four and five.
Yes, sir.
So I've got purchases, I've got single-stream recycling material processing, it's an RFP. So I've got single-stream recycling material processing, it's an RFP.
Excuse me, is there a second to items A through eight? No, okay. All right, we've got, well, we did have a motion and a second. But there's some that some want pulled. All right, so which items you want pulled?
B.
D, isn't it?
B.
Okay. All right, is there any others? Oh, there was a motion to approve all the purchases, and somebody requested that B be pulled out. Is there any others that you would like pulled out?
Sir, I just have comments I can go down. I'd like to break them down.
Okay. All right? Okay. All right, well, then we'll, motion is withdrawn, so we'll start again, sir, with item A.
So, single stream recycling material processing, it's an RFP. We're asking to execute a contract with Federal Recycling and Waste Solutions.
There's a motion and a second approved. Councillor Anker?
I made some phone calls on that. Haven't only gotten one bid on this and not understanding the full scope, you know. And it's only a one-year contract. I'd like in the future to be able to get more involved and learn about these on the front end to see what we can do to them. If we, the comments I got, you made a comment in the motion, there was five people invited and only one participated. The capital expenditure was too large for one-year contract. They needed more defined scope of work, and I think if the city wants, I have questions about how we're doing that. So I'll vote for it, motion for, but I think we've got to see change, that we understand what we're doing and get more participation, get the best back.
Well, would you explain further about understanding what we're doing?
Yeah, I'll open up the bill. And single stream, I can't clearly see the scope of work. And it says that there were five vendors surveyed. And I purposely called the first one on the list, 121 Disposal, with no response. And they said they did not respond because the scope was not clear enough to them. That was the response from the head regional guy.
Well, and let me just interrupt you and say they signed an agreement that they are not going to, if they've got questions, your questions should come to the purchasing division and not to vendors. You should not be calling vendors.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That is a violation.
Well, I haven't had an orientation, so I'll know that in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Hey, I'm trying to learn from somewhere, city manager. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so there is item A, that there was a motion in a second, I believe we heard. So if you'll put that on the screen and we'll vote on item A. All right, and that's approved.
And B, Mayor, is an amendment for underserved and inmate healthcare consultant. This is an agreement that would go from $195,000 to $270,000, plus an hourly rate of $500 per hour. And this is a group that, I guess, there's a three-member, self-appointed, three-member council group that's been working with them.
Yep.
And so you have questions?
Councillor Crabbe?
Thank you. How much do we have in that fund right now? The underserved and inmate healthcare consultant, because I.
It's quite, I think it's somewhere around 30 million.
You don't know the exact amount?
You want it to the penny? I think it's around 30 million.
Okay. How much goes in there annually?
It's three, well, it went from three meals down to two and a half. So it was 13, the value of a meal, somewhere between 13 and 15 million. At two and a half meals, it's going to be somewhere 10, a little over 10 million.
When we vote on this, when does implementation begin?
Well, I think they're actually going to be presenting to you today, that group. Their consultants, that the three members of council have been working with.
Okay. And so then the, so maybe they'll answer my next question. How long will it take for the implementation to be complete? So they'll probably answer that in the presentation.
That is something that I have not been involved in because you have three members of council that you appointed to handle this, not me.
Okay, well, then can some.
Councillor Tucker?
Yes, we have been meeting, I can't remember exactly when we first started meeting, but it's been quite some time, myself, councillor Davis, and we enlisted councillor Kogle to help as well. But the presentation is going to show in this item B on updates and presentations, it's going to show the timeline from where we started, and it's going to break down the tool that we would like to implement on how to use the funds, meaning a tier approach, doing it with mental health. Your tier one would be your main hospitals. And also our community healthcare that the fire and MS and the community partner. So all of that will be listed in item B to say exactly how we started, where we are right now, and the future implementation of the program. And that will all depend on us as a council body on the implementation of it.
Okay. Are we going to have that presentation now?
They're here.
As part of this?
No, I have it after, at the end of my agenda.
Okay. I move to approve this.
Do you want to just pull B?
Pardon?
Did you want to just pull B?
Yeah, let's do it last, and it kind of as part of that presentation, I think that would be good.
Okay, well, let's move on to item C then.
So item C is a contract extension for hot asphalt and general repair?
Motion second to approve item C. Any discussion on that item? Yes, sir. Councillor Anker?
We're getting next to the dump trucks and the vehicles. I know you had a capital plan and a budget from last year. We're getting close to the end of it. And we're still spending a lot of money in these areas and contracts. And I would like to have a list of the road plan, the engineered road plan on priorities in the future. And I'm going to vote and continue on with your operation plan, sir. I just need to be informed. I appreciate you inviting me very soon to come over.
Well, let me just say that, yeah, I'm going to invite you for an orientation.
Thank you.
Very soon.
Yes, sir.
And they tell them you're scheduled on the 14th. But we have a pavement management plan that you'll learn about, and it's graded. And this is hot asphalt where we just pave roads. We'll be happy. You don't have to wait until you get to council meeting. You can call me, we can meet, and we can talk about anything that you don't understand.
Thank you.
All right. So there's a motion second on item C. Please put that on the screen. Councillors, you can vote now, please. All right, that's approved.
So D is two seven-yard dump trucks for public works.
Motion second approved. Councillor Tucker?
It was in reference to the road repair. I think when Donna Newman was here, director, she had gave us an update. She sent it, well, she printed it out and sent it via email. Can we get, add that to our referral list to get an update? I think it'd be helpful for some of the, well, some of the new people on council indefinitely to see where we are and what's been paid.
Sure.
Thank you.
So I've got, we've talked about.
We, if you go on to item D?
Yeah, D, the dump trucks.
Yep.
Did they vote?
No, we've had a motion in a second on that, correct?
Yes.
All right, so if you'll put that on the screen. Councillors, you can vote. All right, that's approved.
So.
There's a motion and a second to approve E, the consultant services. Any discussion on that item? All right, please put it on the screen. Councillors, vote.
So F is scheduling software for Metra?
Motion second to approve the software for Metra. Any discussion on that item? All right, please put it on the screen. All in favor, please vote green. Anybody else in red? We'll do a voice vote. All in favor of the scheduling software, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved.
So I've got declaration of surplus and donation of tasers.
Motion second on the tasers. Any discussion on that item? All right, please put that one on the screen. There we go. And that's approved.
And I've got comprehensive.
Motion second to approve inmate healthcare services. Any discussion? Please put it on the screen. Councillors, you can vote.
And so with that, Mayor, I've got two updates. I'm going to actually call up the community care program update first by, pardon? And this is, Deputy City Manager Hodge will introduce the guest.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and council. This is Bob Pastkowski. He has been working on our community care program. We do have a subcommittee of council that has also been involved in the entire process of developing this program for the city. And so I'm going to turn it over to Bob, and he'll kind of walk through. He's been providing periodic updates to council as we've gone through this process. But we are concluding the process. We're ready for the implementation stage. And so we'll kind of walk through the entire program and then happy to answer any questions at the end.
Thank you and good afternoon. Thanks for having us back to talk a little bit more about the community care program. You've probably seen this iteration of the presentation in the past, what we've been doing each time we continue our work. We just keep adding to this. So hopefully, this is iterative and you're kind of getting a good background. So I'll hit some of those slides that I've presented in the past, but also spent, again, most of the time talking about some of our recommendations to conclude the design of the community care program and start to move into implementation. And also just making a statement that this is the first iteration of the program. This is subject to change going into the future. It's a good starting point. We'll start to build some history on the successes of the program, how the dollars are being spent, the quality of the program, the number of residents that are being actually served as well. So just want to keep that preface there. Again, I'll hit, again, some of the highlights here. These were the objectives as part of the request for proposal. And again, those first three are really related to building a network of providers that can serve both the underserved population and the inmate population. And then to build a reimbursement model to support those providers. And then to actually have some key performance indicators, KPIs, to really show the success and the effectiveness of the program. And then just to the right of this are just some of the key contractual terms. And councillor, I think one of the things when I presented the last time, we did make the adjustment that this is for Muskogee County only. I think we had different verbiage in there before, so we did make that change. I want to point that out. Again, the key here is who's going to be served and what services will be covered under the program. And you can see the definition of who's eligible, both on the inmate and the underserved populations there. Won't go over that again. But again, the services that are defined are listed here. It's not a carboche of all these services that can be paid out of this fund. These are the defined covered services that will be provided to this population and funded under the program. That's just our team. Some of the earlier comments that we were really using the city manager's office, as well as councillors Tucker, Cole, and Davis, really to give us guidance as we were doing all of our work. We interviewed a lot of providers, a lot of key constituents in this whole process for months, and got that all actually documented. We actually, our last visit, we went and visited with several of the providers, talked to them, what's important to them as well, to get their feedback. So that all kind of went into the program. Couple of the goals here, and again, it was really to expand the reach. Historically, that's been fairly limited. And we really heard pretty loud and clear from the group that we wanted to expand both for primary care and mental health services. And that was an important goal for the overall program. Well, that's the historical view.
Bob, excuse me, just a moment. Councillor Crabbe?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Under the prisoners, under the inmate, why a three-month period after discharge?
Bob hit your light on there. I accidentally turned you off. Just, should be a button on the microphone. There we go.
That one? Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
What was the question?
On the inmates, you had stated there was a, you included a three-month period after discharge.
Yeah, that's my understanding of, that was included in the request for proposal, that after they are discharged from jail, that they'll move in for 90 days into the indigent care program so they have some continuity of care for those 90 days after they're released.
I see, okay.
Thank you.
Councillor Tucker?
Yeah, I was actually going to also add that there are some state guidelines in reference. I'm trying to see if it's state and federal. But that three-month transition period is actually funds that are available for those in transition. And it's a three-month period. That was something that I had got in a meeting with somebody.
So again, we were using this group to really run all the ideas through and been presenting this information all along since we started. Go here. So now, feature state. Really, if you start on the left side of this page, that's the amount of the funds that would be available. As we heard earlier, somewhere between the $10 to $12 million will come in a fund. Some of that will be used for some program administration. I'll share some of that detail. Some of those dollars will go to the inmate population and then the rest to the underserved. And what we did here was try to prioritize the categories of services between primary care, mental health, and behavioral health, specialty care, hospital, inpatient care, then ancillary services. So we want to make sure we encapsulate all services that a potential patient would need in this program. So let's go through this a little more detail. Under program administration, my understanding is that a program administrator, at least a job description has been written, and that recruitment will begin. That's really the piece, the person that will lead the program going into the future. He or she would be in the administration group. We'd also look at hiring a third-party administrator to process claims, to handle eligibility, really to stand up, help stand up the program going into the future. Some potential care management. And the other thing is just the reserve management. Again, this is a fixed amount of money that has to be managed. And at some point, these are like claims, and we don't know, we can't predict exactly how much is going to be spent for this population. So it's really going to be critical those first two years to really manage that, those dollars, to see what is being used and if there are some adjustments that may need to be made going forward. But again, there may be some good idea here to reserve some of those dollars going into the future. After the program administration dollars, then the amount for the inmate population, and again, these would be for services that have been handled historically and paid for outside of, there's an onsite clinic, but these would be services paid for outside of the onsite clinic when they need care, mostly in an inpatient setting. And then the remaining dollars there would be for underserved population. Again, we have the pool set up here, and we'll talk a little about how those rates would be established to pay those services. Again, and consider some kind of withhold or some kind of reserve as the dollars are being spent throughout the fiscal year, that when you get to the end of the year, you've got to really evaluate the dollars that are left. We talked about really that the center of this is being the patient medical home. This is where we really want primary care involved. And I'll talk on this a little bit more here in a minute. But here's our recommendations. First of all, for the administration pool, again, I've listed the services earlier. We talked about it. This is how we would suggest they would be built up and priced. So for example, the program administrator would be cost-based. His or her salary with benefits would actually go into the pool. If there is any care management. If there is any care management, that's provided by the program administrator. And then we have the third-party administration services. Those would be the consumption, a lot of those program administration dollars first. At the request of our advisory committee, we actually teased out the Columbus Fire and EMS, the Columbus Correct Care Program. That would be funded separately and that would be cost-based as well. So again, taking that $10 or $12 million and this would be the first consumption of those dollars for the administration of the program. Any questions on that?
No, sure. Yes, Councillor Tucker?
Yes.
I was waiting until we got to the part where we were mentioning, and I don't know if it was in this presentation, regarding the cost for like medication. Remember you were saying as far as getting like more bang for your buck, what type of, I guess, service providers we would best be served to align ourselves with?
Yeah, that would be the next slide. So this is for the administration. The next pool of dollars would be used for the care of the program.
And then, and I'm not sure if it's in the slides, but remember how we talked about the tiers? Like tier one, we will put so much funds in tier one. I guess we got like five, but as far as the pockets.
Skip ahead to this. So we put them in categories, Councillor Tucker. So you have primary care separate from mental health, the specialists, hospitals and ancillary services. So these were the groupings within the, I'll say, the types of care that are being suggested. And this is after a list of providers that were provided by the city manager's office, talking to several of you, talking about the providers. Hey, you might want to talk to a few other people. We probably interviewed 20 to 25 different providers. And these are the lists that we would, again, recommend to include in that initial network. And if you can see on the right slide as well, one of the things when we were onsite, we were making sure that the providers were kind of buying into this metal, medical home concept, which is really getting the primary care physician, the center of the care for that particular patient. And they would help direct care when they should go to other specialists or need to go to an emergency room, those things. But again, most, everybody was really in support of that kind of medical home concept. So councillor Tucker, about the, I think we may have been talking about drugs. They're called 340B drugs, which you can buy at a heavy discount and you can buy those and you have to qualify for that. Several of these providers on this list are, do have eligibility for that. So we would want to make sure as we're starting to, I'll say, implement the program, we want to make sure people that need those type of drugs are in a medical home that has the 340B eligibility from a pricing perspective. Okay. So there's footnotes in here, but again, this is how we came to this list of proposed providers in the network. And then the reimbursement, we've talked back and forth a little bit about this. We would just start with whatever their Medicaid rates are today. So if a service is provided and they typically would have billed Medicaid for it, that reimbursement price would be the same in this program as would if they billed the state in the Medicaid program. Again, this is going to be where it's insurance, you just don't know what you're going to spend through the year. So it's going to be something we'll have to be monitoring each month to see how much of those dollars are being spent. This is a little bit of a busy slide, but we wanted to get this out. And this is where one of our recommendations is to really put together a provider task force, because these are somewhat clinical and care delivery type measurements, but these are things that we've seen in our, in our work across the country. If, again, by category going across the top as well as type of service, whether it's a patient access, how to manage high-cost utilizers, and I know the Columbus Correct Care Program is dealing with that as well, care coordination, clinical measures. We've listed a few in here as a starting point, but really would suggest that the actual provider task force that we would recommend would actually start to put something like this together that would measure both financial and clinical success in the program. I think this was the question, if I'll transition a little bit here to implementation between now and July 1st. I don't know if we can keep going here. Again, the clinical task force, again, to take those key performance indicators on the prior slide to really solidify those measures, I think that should come from your clinicians and the program. And then really to start the process of getting the third-party administration companies, a request for proposal and get that, those, that group selected, the program administrator we talked about earlier, and getting these providers under a contract so that when one of our eligible patients are seen on July 2nd, that a claim is processed, there's a fee schedule ready to be paid, and that provider's paid for the services it provides within a certain timeframe. So that's really a lot of work to get done between the next, in the next 90 days. I think that was the conclusion. I think the last slide we just had, this is just the culmination of all the work, but we're really in the final lap here to move from, you know, this design, if accepted, to go ahead and start the implementation. These were the key four milestones that we identified and worked with Pam and her team.
Councillor Tucker?
I want to say that this, it's been a pleasure being on this committee, working on this, this important project that will be impactful for our community. I'm thankful that we were able to include the Columbus Correct Care with our fire chief, Sal Skarper in the back, and also his coalition of individuals to include Valley Healthcare and so many other providers. I did have a question regarding the provider task force. So is the provider task force and the clinical task force, is it really the same thing?
Yes.
Who did, who did we, so is that going to be something that council appoints who will be on this provider clinical task force?
So my thought or recommendation would be that whoever signs a contract with us, that they would appoint someone to serve on that committee so that out of the 10 different providers that we have, there's a representative on that task force.
Okay. Did we, and councillor Crabbe, did ask that question in reference to how much we have currently in the fund? And that's one of the things that we've been saying is during our due diligence, not to overextend, you know, those funds to the point that we depleted, that we have to keep some type of cushion because we don't know the type of ailments that people may have in the procedures. Sadly, I know one individual went to the doctor and had a $74,000 bill that indigent care had to pay. So we will possibly have those ones that's close to six-figure bills depending on, on this situation. But what I do want to ensure is, and I forgot what you called it, because I can't get tier out my mind. So you said that we put it in the categories, the primary care.
Type of service.
The type of service category. So basically put in a cap on the different types of services where not one group can overextend how much we, that's used within that category. So of course, primary care would be, you know, your top tier. So it might have more money. Mental health would be the next tier. And then you'll have your specialists and then ancillary services. But put in tiers and put in a cap, and then also put in a cap on those service providers that once they reach their maximum amount, then that's it. Like when we were in the contract before, we had one individual getting $30 million or $15 million. It won't be like that. Once you get your two, three million, that's it. You know, and it's going to be cap per category. Mayor, can you hear councillor Crabbe's too? Sorry. But once you, once you hit your cap within, within those service provider categories, that's one of the things that we had added, where one individual can't use all of the money in, within the primary care or within mental health care or, you know, you have a maximum amount.
So you're capping the individuals also?
Yes.
Okay. That was my big question, because if we're going to cap these levels and then we're going to cap the providers, we need to cap the individuals also so that one individual isn't maxing out, you know, one provider or one tier.
Yeah. So we did, we, and when you say individual, I was thinking that you were talking about individual service provider.
No, I'm talking about an individual patient.
And it's probably because, and I don't know how we're going to do that, because we'll have that one individual who is managing the whole program that will be a city employee. So as we're bringing somebody in that will be qualified, have healthcare background that will oversee the whole program, because before we depended heavily on Piedmont, I was going to say the medical center, but Piedmont, they kept a database of all, all the indigent care and they had the information. Now we will have the information as the city. But I get what you're saying as far as capping. Now how does, how would that work in reference to cap?
Well, this is where, you know, we already, we're already starting to talk about design and implementation now, right? And this is why we want to get started on the who and how much, and then start to design each of these polls pretty quickly from an implementation standpoint. That's what really needs to happen from here. All we're saying is that when the services come in, we've set a fee schedule, what they get paid, but what happens if we spend too much money? Then we have to start to mitigate some of those dollars. So this is really getting into the implementation piece.
Councillor Chambers?
Yeah, quick question. How often will we have access to the key performance indicators?
Normally those would be produced based on when the claims come in, councillor. So as claims are getting processed by the third-party administrator, we would have access to that information. And some of that frankly may need to be reported by some of the, some of the key providers in this network. Things that may not show up on a claim, you know, access on claims. So we'd probably be asking some of that core group that, in the medical home, to provide some of that information. Because the one thing we're probably going to see here is a increase in the number of people we're serving. So historically, that's been, you know, in that 400 to 500 range. It could be significantly higher than that, but that's, that was the whole purpose of this, is try to expand this. But we've got to be careful that there's, you know, there's only so many dollars to use. Thank you. Sure.
Councillor Crabbe?
I guess if you're capping a provider, then the provider could determine, you know, if they're, if they're going to cap an individual patient within, within their provider, because they could, they could choose to write off some of theirs or, you know, so I don't know, I don't know if we want to micromanage the providers that much by capping individuals per se. I mean, that's something that I'll leave up to you, but just something that's kind of going through my mind.
It's a great point, but I'm sure it existed prior to 2022 as well. There could have been a catastrophic patient in one of the hospitals that ran up a six-digit bill and I'm, I don't know how those were handled in the past. This is something that happens unfortunately in insurance that will have to, have to be part of that program.
That's all the questions.
So I do want to mention, we did send a job description to Evergreen and it was graded at a 128, which starts at around 66, 810. And so we'll be coming back to council at the next meeting to get approval of the program, to get approval of creating the position, to get that position advertised, as well as the process of the RFP in order to hire a third-party administrator. That is not a skill that we have in-house, so we will need to have a outside service for a third-party administrator. So that will be coming back to council at the next meeting for approval so that we can continue to move forward and target this July 1st implementation date.
All right, there's a motion and a second. I thought B was the one we skipped. No, no. So there's a motion, is there a motion to approve B? All right, is there a second? All right, motion, second to approve item B. Y'all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, let's approve.
Mayor, the, thank you, sir. The final update is the CCG Health Plan Update. HR Director Aretha Hollowell is coming and we've got our consultant here as well. She'll introduce the consultant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. It has been a while since we have provided an update on our healthcare plan and as well as our Health and Wellness Center. So we thought that this would be a good opportunity to provide an update. You will not be asked to vote on anything today or approve anything today. This is just an update. Our benefit consultants, as the city manager mentioned, is here with NFP and they're going to actually provide the update and I will introduce them shortly. For the benefit of some of our newer council members, I wanted to make you aware of the Health and Wellness Center. The Health and Wellness Center is an onsite health and wellness center that serves as a primary doctor's office for CCG employees and their dependents. One of the primary focuses of the Health and Wellness Center is on preventive health as a way to help improve employees' healthcare, to help that to be better and to mitigate the rising cost of healthcare costs. It was in 2011 that this council, on the recommendation from administration, approved establishing an onsite Health and Wellness Center. My predecessor, Mr. Tom Baron, he had the vision of the Health and Wellness Center and he worked diligently to bring that into fruition before he retired. The Health and Wellness Center took about two years to come into fruition and it was officially open in April of 2013. It was initially open in the 2000 building located in the Medical Center complex. The Health and Wellness Center has relocated, relocated in 2023 and it's currently located at 1124 Broadway. Of the many benefits of the Health and Wellness Center, and there are many, there are no co-pays for any office visits. All of the services at the Health and Wellness Center are free to employees and their dependents. The Health and Wellness Center is not a pharmacy. However, they do dispense many generic and some name brand drugs at no cost to the patients. So, and the consultant is going to share a little bit more information about some of the outcomes of the Health and Wellness Center since we've had it in place. But to introduce our benefit consultant, Ms. Melody Lewis, she is the lead consultant on our account and she's been on our account for almost a year now. Melody is a senior vice president of consulting with NFP. She has over 20 years of experience in the benefits industry. She's worked in sales, operations, leadership and consulting. She's been with NFP for the past three and a half years. Melody is a seasoned professional. She knows our book of business well. So she is joined today by one of her colleagues that many of you all know, Todd Hooper is here. He's been with us and been on this account for a number of years and he's here today. So without any further delay, Melody is going to share an So without any further delay, uh, Melody is gonna share an update on our healthcare plan and we'll entertain any questions that you all have.
Perfect. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and council members. Thank you for allowing me to be here today and thank you, Ms. Reether, for a very kind introduction. I am excited to share with you today some updates from the health plan. As Ms. Reether indicated, first thing I wanna kinda jump into is the Health and Wellness Clinic or, or Wellness Center. Some of the, the stats that we wanna share with you around the center and what that looks like, that has kind of occurred particularly for plan year twenty-four since we've, we're coming off of that plan year. What you see there on your screen is this is a, is a slide indicating those members, those participants who have engaged directly with the, uh, the center and those that have not engaged with the center. And what an engagement means, just to clarify that, that would be a provider visit. That means they've at least gone one time, um, some obviously probably more, but have at least engaged one time with a provider at the clinic. So you can see there on this slide, this really demonstrates, we've had over one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two members actually engaged with the clinic versus the six hundred and ninety-six that have not engaged. And what is relevant about that is that cost difference. For those members that engage with the clinic, and this is actually based on CCG's data, the average spend for those members that engage is three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars versus those that do not, the, the cost being four thousand three hundred and ten dollars. So for those members that engage, obviously it's an eleven percent less, they are eleven percent less costly than those that don't. Again, demonstrating the value of that clinic to CCG. In addition, I wanna get into some, some further details around the clinic and some of the experiences or some of the stats that you see. So we've had two hundred and thirty pa, two hundred and thirty-eight patients reduce their A1C. A1C, just so everyone is familiar with that, that measures the blood sugar in your, or the sugar in your blood over a long period of time. And so we've had two hundred and thirty-eight patients that actually reduced their, um, A1C by a hundred and thirty points. And then we had another thirty-two patients who reduced their, um, A1C by a point. That is a potential savings of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. A patient with diabetes costs about thirteen thousand dollars whereas a patient without diabetes, you're looking at about twenty-five hundred dollars. So again, you can see that significance of someone with diabetes versus not having diabetes. So being able to reduce those A1C numbers are very important to the overall health and well-being of our population. In addition, um, couple stats there in regards to just overall weight loss. We had fifty-seven prediabetic participants that experienced five percent weight loss. We also had a total of eighty-one participants that reduced their weight by eight percent. And then the total weight loss altogether there, you can see is six thousand six hundred and nineteen pounds loss. That's huge for 2024. That was one thousand seven hundred and fifteen inches. And that equates to over almost, I'm gonna just say, almost twenty-seven thousand pounds of pressure on the joints. So again, some really amazing outcomes that we're seeing from the Health and Wellness Center and also just members being engaged in the program and completing those personal health assessments as well. These are some of the stats on this page here that really tie into the, uh, the PHAs is what we refer to them as, which is the personal health assessment, assess, a personal health assessment. This data actually is a cohort across, um, twenty-three and twenty-four. So it allows us to measure that over a longer period of time. And so what you see for twenty-three and twenty-four, we had nine hundred and eighty patients that participated, were, were part of this cohort and population that were measured. There were seven hundred and seventy-two of them that actually showed improved metrics overall, at least one metric or more. That represents, um, a, uh, an improvement of over seventy-nine percent. Again, some of those stats you can see on the right chart there, the blood pressure. We had fifty, over fifty-five percent of individuals that improved blood pressure, the body mass index improving by over twenty-nine percent, cholesterol, uh, uh, improving by forty-two percent. And then I've already talked about the diabetes A1C. In the middle there just demonstrates the, those that, they, these, uh, stats remain stable, which again is, is great. We want those, uh, at least improving or remaining consistent if those numbers are good. And you can see we had some of that worsened. And so what does that mean? How do we address that? We continue to work with our Health and Wellness Center, reviewing our program and making sure that again, we are addressing these areas that need to be addressed as well. So what does that mean? We, we've just talked about a lot of good positive things from the Health and Wellness Program. So what does it mean overall for cost of the health plan? So what we've, uh, demonstrated here is from twenty-four back to 2018, just showing you what the gross and net medical and pharmacy expenses have been for the plan. You can see the average trend from 2018 to current twenty-four has been six point eight percent. Clearly you can see in looking at those numbers that we definitely have had some spikes. Twenty-one, we had a pretty significant spike as well as this past year. Twenty-four, we've had a pretty significant spike. I'm gonna talk as we go forward, some of the things that we've done as a plan to try to help mitigate some of the cost. But again, just really wanted to show you kind of what, what we have been experiencing as a health plan overall for the last several years. One of the things that we did several years ago was we carved out our pharmacy benefits. And so that allows more control over the, the pharmacy, being able to control those costs, the drugs, those types of things. And so you can see in the, in the, the right half of this chart where it demonstrates those RX rebates and you can see where we started to be able to improve and get more rebates back. And so those mon, that money gets returned right back into the plan. So helps offset some of those costs as well. So again, our overall gross trend was six point eight, but when you add in the pharmacy rebates and those items as well, that reduces that to five point four percent. Again, just di, the diagrams there just depict how costs are continuing to increase. And again, I, we'll talk about that more, um, towards the end, what, what kind of we expect in the future as well. What has been the impact from a budget perspective? I wanna, we, we looked back over the last five years. So our five-year average health plan budget increase, that's per budgeted position, has been two point two-two percent. The five-year average CCG budget increase has been a little over three percent. Our employee contributions, those have varied year over year, but CCG has really done an amazing job being able to kind of mitigate and reduce the cost overall in terms of what the members are paying out of pocket for their premiums. So you can see there from this, for the last five years, again, the employee contribution change has also been very minimal as well. And then again, this last chart just depicting, again, what that per budgeted position has been, um, each year, what that increase represented in terms of a percentage, dollar amount. And then also some of the cost-saving programs that were put in place over the last five years. And then again, most importantly, what is the percentage that CCG pays towards that premium, right, for the healthcare cost? And you can see year over year, again, it's been consistent there, twenty-one, twenty-two, paying seventy percent of that overall cost. And that has gradually increased some over the recent years, which is very much in line with industry norms as well. I mentioned some of the cost-saving measures. So, um, I, I already talked about the PBM, so I wanted to mention several other things. Increasing the tobacco surcharge, again, that's an important component of the plan because we wanna try to incent members, right, to participate in healthy behaviors. So having that tobacco surcharge hopefully, you know, puts a little pressure there and encourages members to either try to kick that habit or, you know, get that out of there. So again, they can get back to paying a lesser amount for their insurance and not having to pay that, that surcharge. Also, um, increasing premiums for the non-wellness participants. Again, using that as an incentive, right, to try to get them to participate in the wellness program. You can clearly see we've got great participation, but we still have opportunity as well. And so we wanna continue to encourage our members to participate in the wellness program. Also, we have adjusted co-pays for office visits, again, in an effort to try to steer towards those more cost-effective places of service. Obviously, we want members going to the emergency room if it's truly an emergent situation, but sometimes we find that's not the case, right? Again, looking at an alternative site of care and, and, you know, whether you're going to an urgent care, a primary care. We also introduced, um, virtual primary care and urgent care solutions as well. So some of, again, some of the things we have done to try to mitigate the cost as well as provide additional resources and benefits to the members as well. This, this, this chart here is just a, um, overall from seventeen to twenty-five, just a, a picture of what those employee health premiums have looked, have looked like. These are the active wellness rates per pay period. The biggest thing that you're gonna note, there have been no changes for nine years. CCG has been able to keep the cost, what the, what the employee pays per pay period, flat for those that participate in the wellness program. There has been an increase in the tobacco surcharge, um, that increased in 2021. But your spousal surcharge rate has also remained flat. So again, going back to, we're really trying to incent members to participate in our Health and Wellness Center and our overall, um, wellness program. And then just as a reminder, there are two committees, two boards that, um, the health plan does work directly with. We have the retirement, or let me go first, with the Employee Benefits Committee that was established in 2012. It is a seven-member committee, um, and they address issues, you know, concerning health benefits and any other benefits. We do meet bi-monthly with HR, finance, as well as myself and, and our team as well. Same thing with the Retiree Benefits Committee. We meet with them as well. They were established in 2011. That is a five-member committee. We're also addressing concerns with the retiree, uh, regarding the retiree healthcare plan. That's both the pre-sixty-five retirees plus the post-sixty-five. And so anything related to benefits, um, and that, that either of those committees, um, want to discuss. The meeting with the Retiree Health Benefits Committee is generally held quarterly and again, that is with HR and, um, myself and our team as well, as the benefits consultants. So what's the future look like, right? That's the big question I think we all have on our mind. You know, what, what the industry is telling us right now, um, our parent company, Aon as well, you know, what we are expecting to see, what, what we've expected to see for twenty-five is really increases close to the nine percent plus range. Honestly, we've started to see those even come in higher as we're working on renewals for 2025. And frankly, the things that are really driving that, it's medical services, it's the cost and services. Those are really the big things that do drive it. It's the cost of services and utilization, right? And so the cost of services, it's rising, employment levels, wages. I mean, you all know that as an employer, you know, what it costs to be able to, to staff, to be able to retain, attract people. And overall inflation, that's obviously having an impact. And I would be remiss, I expect someone may ask before the day is over, how are these tariffs and things? How could that possibly impact healthcare? I think it's early, right, to say, but I will say, I, I actually, uh, I will tell you, I recommend you reading, uh, any kind of hospital Becker's Review, just put out something yesterday. And I will share with you, the hospital systems, you know, are saying they are expecting some pretty significant increase that are gonna affect cost and services as well as supply chain demand. Even though right now they are speculating that pharmacies should not necessarily be impacted, at least that's the initial, you know, that they're not targeting drugs. They do expect with the supply chain issues and especially generic drugs, some of those that do come from some of the other countries today, that there, we, we could be seeing some pretty significant increases, double digits beyond even what we're expecting. So again, um, I think those will be potentially things that will impact our medical services and the cost. Obviously, as I mentioned, utilization, high-cost claims, that's something over the last couple of years. And again, we experience that every year, but I will tell you, the last two years, we have experienced some pretty significant, um, high-cost claims. Just to give you an example, this year alone, we had about fifteen high-cost claimants. That means their claims were a hundred and fifty thousand dollars individually plus. That represented, those individuals represented twenty-two percent of our overall spend. So significant dollars overall. And again, and you could clearly see that in the, in the diagram in terms of how our costs have gone up, right, year over year. You know, I will share the good news about that. Again, I think that we are controlling the cost where we can with our Health and Wellness Center and other programs that we have. And some of what we're seeing, I mean, they are unfortunately just chronic conditions, things that, you know, cancers, things like that, that we just cannot necessarily, you know, prevent unfortunately. So, but I do think, you know, um, again, we're going to continue to see those things and the, and the things that impact those are of course those high-cost drugs, high-cost services to treat those things. And then, uh, as I've mentioned, pharmacy, the pharmacy demand. In fact, an interesting fact, just that I think's good for you to know, uh, national medic, uh, national trends right now, medical trend is running at about seven point six. Your pharmacy trend is about eleven point six. So that gives you an idea right there how the pharmacy has such a significant impact as well. And it used to be when you looked at, at healthcare spend, you know, your medical and your pharmacy, your medical spend oftentimes used to outweigh what you spent in pharmacy claims. Now they're pretty neck and neck. It's about fifty-fifty in terms of what the plan spends on medical and what they spend on pharmacy. So again, all of those having some pretty significant impacts on the healthcare spend overall. So what does that mean for us? We do expect there, you know, this high, high inflation, high cost to continue. As I mentioned, unknown with tariffs and how those things may impact us going forward. You know, I, I, I don't wanna say it's a bleak outlook, but we will continue to see those, those high, those increases. And that's where we will continue to all work together to try to make sure we've got the right programs implemented and continue to support CCG and the employees overall. Questions? I know I threw a lot of information at you.
Counselor Chambers?
Yeah, quick question. So do we have like two deductibles, like a thousand dollar or a high deductible plan, three thousand? I mean, how does that?
No, today you have a, a, one single plan through Anthem currently. Yep, for the active employees.
Okay.
Yep. That is, I will, I'll just comment, those are things that we do have, you know, on the pipeline for future consideration as well. Do we look at other plan alternatives, adding additional benefits, you know, or, or plan options, that type of thing?
So I know the cost of insurance is increasing. Quick question, have we looked at, um, the pros and cons of self-funding?
We are self-funded.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Yep.
Just, just for clarification, in terms of the, there is a, in terms of options with that plan, Counselor Chambers, the employees do have the option of the, what we call the silver plan and the gold plan. So they, and they do have different, uh, deductibles that they carry with them.
Sorry. I was just thinking Anthem.
And, and different out-of-pocket.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Madam Clerk. Hit your button.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, on the Clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution changing the meeting schedule for the month of June.
Motion and a second to approve changing of the meeting schedule. All in favor, say aye. And any opposed? All right, motion that the minutes be received. Is there a second? All right, we have a second. All in fa, is there any that anyone'd like to edit or pull out of there? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, they're approved, they're received.
And I would like to ask council to approve two add-on resolutions. One excusing Counselor Davis and the other excusing Counselor Huff.
Motion and a second to approve Davis and Huff. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're, they're excused.
Next we have board appointments. The first ones are mayor's appointments. We have the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority. We have the seat for the CPA, the Corporate Employment Attorney, and the Law Enforcement Representative.
I'll get them for you.
Okay. For the Community Development Advisory Council, we have a vacant seat. On the Housing Authority of Columbus, the seat of Josh, excuse me, John Greaman. He is eligible to succeed himself, but I believe you were working on that, weren't you?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Mr. Greaman, what I, I still have to reach out and get in touch with him. I'll get it for you.
Okay. Next, we have authority appointments. These appointments are submitted to the council for their confirmation. This is the Medical Center Hospital Authority. We have Mike Burns, Max Brabson, and James Allen McMullin.
Motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, they're approved.
Next we have council's appointments. We have the Columbus Next, we have council's appointments. We have the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority, Mike Welch and Andy Lucre. We're nominated at the last meeting. We have the Circle Commission, Brandon Wilkins, and then the Crime Prevention Board, Ralph King. They can be confirmed.
All right, there's a motion, second to move confirmation of all those listed. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're confirmed.
Next, we have council's appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Board of Tax Assessors, councilors Anchor and Crab are nominating Clayton Hood. For the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority, we have the seat for the promotional entity. This entity would have to be experts in the professional hockey field. Then we have the Trade Center Representative, Rivers Center Representative, and the CVB rep. For the Employee Benefits Committee, Directors Holly Browder and Nancy Boren, they are both interested in serving another term.
All right, is we renominate, or can we confirm?
There's just nominations. They'll be listed for confirmation in the next one. Next, we have two general government employee seats, and HR is working on those as well as the next few. We have the seat that's selected by the general government employees and for the public safety employees, and then we have the seat of a sworn officer. And Timothy Smith is not eligible to serve another term. Then we have the Land Bank Authority, and Counselor Crab is nominating Reynolds Bickerstaff to fill the unexpired term. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I meant to ask this city manager, can we get an update of, on the lifeguards? I know we got probably about a month or so, and how many we actually have hired, and how many we still need to ensure that our outside, our outdoor pools are operational? Thank you.
To show you how everybody's after, I mentioned that, I was speaking to a group, and I said, by the way, blatant advertisement for lifeguards, two entities raised their hands, said, we'll take whatever your overflow is, because they're looking for them too. It was Girls Inc. and one other, I can't remember which one. So yeah, it's tough. Teenagers don't want to work anymore. All right, well, we'll move in. We've got two individuals that have waited for three additional minutes. First is Mr. Broadwater, senior. Sir, if you'd please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will use two of my minutes, and then I'll, I just kind of free-wheel it on the last one minute. I would ask you all to remember that the majority of the people in our community don't have time to come to a council meeting, early on a weekday morning or late on a weekday evening. The majority of our citizens are working, dropping off or picking up children from school, being caregivers to their family member, worried about coming outside of their house after dark because of crime. Most of our concerns, issues, or problems of our citizens can be addressed in a quarterly town hall meeting where the public is invited. This type, this type of one-on-one conversation not only puts the issues directly in your hands, it builds trust. As always, again, I want to say thank you, but I want to use these last two minutes. You all actually proved my point today. You had two discussions that were contentious. The first one was the South Commons Arena. And when you spoke about that, I just watched you all and I listened. It seems as though I know more than some of the councilors know, and that's just from sitting in the audience. But I challenge you, if you think you're doing a great job, invite all of your constituents, invite the publics to a town hall meeting. Get the message from them. If you want to remove somebody, have a town hall meeting. It seems as though we are afraid to do that. And I spoke to a couple of you, and I said, I think you are afraid to do that, because you are afraid to hear, afraid of what you're going to hear. Not everybody agrees with a lot of the things that you're doing. Granted, there are some. I have to be real, there are some. But the majority do not. But there's only one way for you to prove me wrong, is have a town hall meeting. Now, this council used to have town hall meetings. We don't do it anymore. That's why there's such a discombobulation between a lot of you. There's a discombobulation, because you hear only from constituents that support you. You don't hear the other side. And I would wager to say that the other side would then become the majority if you had a town hall meeting. Don't be afraid of your constituents. Again, I will always say this, you're doing a great job, but you can be better. The largest room in the world is a room for improvement. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Broadwater. And I'll tell you, I'll accept my part of that responsibility. We used to do Talk with the Mayor about every three months. We hadn't done one in six months. So we'll get on that, we'll get one put together, and we'll make sure we listen to the other side. Thank you for reminding us. All right, next is Ms. Carpenter.
Since I'm the last thing standing between you and lunch, let me see if I can do this quickly. At the last present, at the last meeting, when you had the presentation about the master plan, the Trade Center Master Plan, I heard questions about the parking garage, but I didn't hear you ask any questions about the other parts of the master plan. And for me, an issue of concern is this green space area that's next to the entrance to the Trade Center, and there's talk of a stage there. Those of us who live in the Historic District already contend with the concert series. We contend with outdoor events at the Trade Center, the noise from those events. We're now, I'm sure, going to be hearing walk-up music for the Clean Stones, and I'm sure there will be some fireworks that we'll be contending with. I think yet another outdoor venue that close to our homes is going to be really disruptive to those of us who live in the Historic District. And I would like to ask you to vote no on that portion of that plan. The last thing I want to say is that we who live in that neighborhood are some of the best goodwill ambassadors this city has. We meet the people who come in for graduations. They walk up and down the sidewalks in front of our houses. We meet people who come in for Thescon. We meet people who come in for trade shows. We're your ambassadors to those tourists. We want to be good ambassadors for the city. So I would invite you to come down to the neighborhood on a Saturday or a Sunday. Get out of your car, walk around, see the things that our neighbors are engaged in. We're planting the pocket parks. We're blowing pollen off the benches. We, by the way, do you know that we pay for those benches? Do you know that our Neighborhood Association bought those benches and those trash facilities in those pocket parks? We put the plants in them, we water them, we take care of them, we beautify our neighborhood for the tourists who come here. And we're a tourist destination. We have people who come just to spend spring break with their kids in the downtown area. So please, don't treat us like adversaries. Don't treat us like somebody you've got to work around to get what you want to get done. Please include us, talk to us, talk with us, don't talk at us. So that's the last that I wanted to say, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Fran. All right, we have had a request for a short executive session to discuss the acquisition and disposal of property. And potential litigation. Motion and a second to go in executive session. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are in executive session. We'll clear the chambers. All right, we've been in executive session. We discussed potential litigation and the acquisition and disposal of real estate. We took no votes. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, we stand adjourned.